Good evening. I'd like to call to order the school board meeting of June the 22nd, 2021. This evening, Member Kraus has the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Good evening. Tonight, I'd like to share a poem from Tom Kraus called Inspirations. Courage is the discovery that you may not win and trying when you know you can lose. Honor is standing for what you believe, not for what you know. Life isn't about living without problems. Life is about solving problems. If you plow the field every day, the only thing that grows is resentment. Compassion is passion with a heart. The only thing in the whole universe people need to control are their attitudes. How a person wins and loses is much more important than how much a person wins or loses. If you only do what you know you can do, you never do very much. There are no failures, just experiences and your reactions to them. Getting what you want is not nearly as important as giving what you have. Going on a journey with a map requires following directions. Going on a journey without one requires following your heart. Talent without humility is wasted. If you don't want it bad enough to risk losing it, you don't want it bad enough. When life knocks you down, you have two choices: stay down or get up. Thank you. If you'll please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Kraus. Let the record reflect that all five school board members, Dr. Griffin, our attorney and clerk, are present. Ms. Murray, Ms. Stevens, any acknowledgement forms? Thank you. Dr. Griffin, do you have any agenda modifications?
There were four items, Chair. There we go. Think after nine years, I would figure it out. All right, there are four items, Madam Chair. The first, the addendum for good cause is marked on our electronic agenda by a green flag named Addendum Item. Second is I need to pull Item 3A focused on student achievement. Third, updated Item 6BR 2021-22 Student Progression Plan Revision, Elementary School Schedules, Section, Page 11 of the document, to add additional information on the K-12 health education concepts to include mental and emotional health. And finally, I'd like to move our unfinished business item, Item 9A, Policy 8421, mandatory face coverings, mask repeal, to immediately follow public comment on the agenda outline.
Thank you. Board members, do you have any agenda modifications? Vice Chair Pennock?
Yes, I would like to pull Items G, I, J, K, L, M, N, O, Q, and R for discussion and separate consideration.
Thank you. Dr. Griffin, you had one more?
Yes, I do, Madam Chair. I need to pull Item 6CM, Amendment to Policy 169.2, Use of Teleconferencing and Communications Media Technology for Meetings. It is replaced by Item 6CN, Proposed Repeal of Policy 169.2, Use of Teleconferencing and Communications Media Technology for Meetings. Thank you.
Member Calderon, any modifications?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Member Sanchez?
No modifications. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Kraus.
Yes, Item 6S, please. I'd like to pull for clarification.
Six S, like Sam?
S, like Sam.
I do not have any modifications. Is there a motion to approve the outline of the agenda?
No, moved.
Second, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion passes. Thank you. Dr. Griffin, presentations?
Good evening, everybody. It's my honor, at my last board meeting, I've been running around trying to thank people who have helped me over all these years, and there's someone in the audience tonight who you'll probably recognize, who has been at my side through every single storm and emergency situation related to weather that we have had. Whether I have to call him at 3:00 in the morning, he calls me at 4:30 in the morning, always guiding us, ready to guide me with the opening or closing of schools, willing to meet with my team either in person or telephonically, inviting me to the TV station to do and learn what I need to learn. He has been there and has been a really important part of us making good weather decisions. I understand this is going to be quite a hurricane year, so we want to make sure we keep this relationship with Mr. Eric Burris. Come on up, Eric. My former student at Tuscaloosa Middle School and Lake Howell grad 2002. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Griffin, Board Chair Alman, and board members. It is with great pleasure that I introduce Pedro Aviles as the Veteran of the Month. Pedro was... Woo! Wow! Okay, I don't need to say anything else, right? So Pedro was born in Ecuador and lived in South America until he was 15 years old, when his parents decided to move to America in hopes for a better life for their family. Pedro attended Medford Mass High School. He joined the Army after high school in 1973. He spent three and a half years on active duty attending technical school in Fort Dix, New Jersey, and Fort Leonard Wood in Missouri. After completing training, he was stationed in Germany, where he worked as an engineer mechanic responsible for maintaining and repairing heavy equipment in vehicles. After leaving Germany, Pedro spent six months at Hunter Air Force Base in Savannah, Georgia, before joining the National Guard in Massachusetts in 1976. He served in the Guard for seven years in Cambridge, Mass. Pedro has a big family. He has six sisters and six brothers and is very close to his siblings, who all live in Massachusetts. In 1975, Pedro met his wife, Miriam, and in 1987, they moved to Florida and were blessed with four beautiful children, all attended Seminole County Public Schools. Pedro and Miriam have two grandchildren, Ricardo, 17, and Micah, 3. Ricardo attends Seminole High School and Micah will attend... (applause) ...Ida Wild when she goes to kindergarten in 2022. Pedro has a 1969 Camaro, enjoys...[642.41][642.41](laughter) He enjoys taking Sunday cruises to the beach, healthy eating, and listening to 70s music. He loves to travel and spend time with his family, and in his spare time, does some remodeling. In 1977, Pedro joined the U.S. Postal Service in Massachusetts while going to management school at the University of Massachusetts and serving in the National Guard. Pedro retired from the postal service after 30 years and began working for SCPS in 2008 as a bus driver, becoming a mechanic after three years, and eventually transferring to Lyman High School as a security guard. In 2019, he transferred to Facility Services as a helper, and he currently works here at the ESC as a plant maintenance mechanic. He always has a smile on his face, as everyone knows. He goes out of his way to...[693.11][693.11](laughter) ...to support staff, visitors, and he's an asset to SCPS. When he retires in about eight years, not that he's counting, he looks forward to checking out some items, checking some items off his bucket list to include traveling to Ecuador, San Diego, and LA. We thank you, Pedro, for your service and your dedication to SCPS.[716.82][716.82](applause)
Good evening, board members and Dr. Griffin. I'd like to take this opportunity to invite Mrs. Herndon and Mr. Archie to come up to the front to be recognized for their achievement in Wicklow Elementary School being authorized as a primary years program school for Seminole County Public Schools.[756.01][756.01](applause) Wicklow is one of only two elementary schools in SCPS to receive this very highly desirable designation. And just for those of you who may not remember, the Primary Years Program aspires to transcend traditional boundaries and subject areas. Students explore six transdisciplinary themes of global significance: who we are, where we are in place and time, how we express ourselves, how the world works, and how we organize ourselves in sharing the planet. All IB programs base their teaching on inquiry with a strong focus on students constructing their own understanding. They're guided to make connections and transfer learning to new contexts. Strategies focused on effective teamwork and collaboration between students, their teachers, and students and other students, and students all over the world. Teaching is inclusive and values diversity, affirming students' identities, and enabling them to pursue their personal goals. As part of its magnet theme at Wicklow, it's also a dual-language school, providing Spanish and French language instruction for all students. In the past five years, under the leadership of Mrs. Herndon and her team, which includes Mr. Archie, who you saw tonight, and also Assistant Principal Mr. Stone, their coach, Ms. Glass, the teachers have undergone training, they developed many transdisciplinary units, they've worked really hard to make this happen. They have supported, they've completed all the requirements to achieve authorization, and we were notified about two weeks ago that they had achieved this status. So Wicklow is the newest member of a global community with 606 schools in the United States and one of only 36 established in public schools in the state of Florida. It's also important, I'd like to take a minute... Yep, great.[881.13][881.13](laughter) There are not too many of us. I'd also like to recognize the support of our Student Assignment and Program Access Department under the leadership of Mr. Hughes and Ms. Seok, because they have supported and managed the grant, and then also Mrs. Cardona in our ESO World Languages Department, because she has shepherded the dual-language program at Wicklow and has been a guiding force behind making it happen. So as Dr. Griffin has said, the IB is recognized around the world for its innovative approach to education. We strongly believe that it is important to place an equal focus on academics and other transferable skills to best prepare students for future success. Wicklow is one of six elementary schools, magnet schools, and all of our SCPS families can apply, so their children can take advantage and benefit from a world-class IB education. So join me in one final round of applause for the...[938.13][938.13](applause)
Good evening, board members and Dr. Griffin. It is with great honor that I announce new members to the middle school leadership team. First, I would like to introduce the new Assistant Principal at Lawton Chows Middle School, Ms. Lauren McDonald.[962.63][962.63](applause) Mrs. McDonald is a Seminole County Public Schools alumnus. She attended Lawton Elementary School, Jackson Heights Middle School, and graduated from Oviedo High School. She attended THE Florida State University, where she earned a degree in mathematics education. She began her teaching career in the math department at Teague Middle School and taught algebra at her alma mater, Oviedo High School. She has most recently served as Adena Students at Greenwood Lakes Middle School. Joining her this evening are her parents, Bob and Lee Fettie, her husband, Dr. Jason McDonald, her stepdaughter, Caitlin McDonald, stepson, Colin McDonald, father-in-law and mother-in-law, Kevin and Kathy McDonald, her brother-in-law and sister-in-law...[1011.42][1011.42](laughter) ...David and Morgan McDonald, and her niece and nephew, Logan and Evilly McDonald. That's how we do it in middle school.[1021.13][1021.13](applause) Next, I'm proud to introduce the new Assistant Principal at Indian Trails Middle School, Ms. Jamie Denise Barnes.[1039.01][1039.01](applause) Ms. Barnes began her journey in education in 2013 in Lee County, Florida. She joined Seminole County Public Schools shortly thereafter in 2015. During her time here, she served as a life science teacher at Croome's Academy of Information Technology, Go Panthers, for five years, and most recently as an instructional coach at Sanford Middle School, where she represented the Warrior Family as one of Seminole County's 2022 Teacher of the Year semifinalists. Joining her tonight is her significant other, Michael Richardson, her daughter, Jaela Scurry, her bonus son, Messiah Richardson, her mom, Alfreda Knight, her bonus dad, Mickey Allen, her brother, Javion McCullum, and members of the Sanford Middle School and Indian Trails Middle School families. And next, we have another proud moment, the new principal, sorry, at Indian Trails Middle School, Ms. Trish Harchafi.[1115.78][1115.78](applause) Ms. Harchafi began her career in education in 1996 and has served as a behavioral therapist and supervisor at the Colton Palms Educational Center in Lake County. She joined the Seminole County Public Schools team in 2001 and has served as an ESC teacher at Rosenwall School, Layer Elementary, and Lake Brantley High School. She has also served as an Assistant Principal at the Virginia School for the Deaf and Blind and at Seminole, South Seminole Academy of Leadership Law and Advanced Studies. Ms. Harchafi earned her bachelor's degree in psychology and a minor in German, and she's fluent in German, from the University of Central Florida and a master's degree in educational leadership from the University of Phoenix. Joining her tonight is her husband, Abel Harchafi, her son, Omar Harchafi, and members
Okay. So Amy, you had items that you wanted to pull for discussion, a lot of them. So please call on whoever you would like to respond.
Yes?
Please.
Are those for separate consideration?
No. Are they for separate consideration? Separate vote? I just wrote discussion.
Well, for discussion, it's fine. So G really kind of is a standalone. The remainder are all wrapped under the same question.
Okay.
So the letter G, which is the Attorney Employment Agreement for incoming attorney, just have some clarification questions so that I can better understand how we got to the salary for her, for this contract.
Mr. Russi, could you come up, please?
Good evening.
So a couple of comments and questions. Is it standard for an incoming attorney to have a three-year contract? One, and the salary, I did some research, and this is a 45% increase from the salary that she's currently making at her employer now, coming into us, and I would like a better understanding of how we got to the middle of the pay scale regarding her salary, because I feel she's not... I feel that we had put in the job description some preferred things that she has not met yet, and so I'm curious as to how we got.
First, on the first question about the three-year contract, it has been a practice for us in the past that we've offered a three-year contract. It does provide an out for both the board and the attorney with notice to end that contract, but it has been a past practice that we've done that, and that's similar to what's done with other individuals in similar type positions maybe outside of the organization. I know part of the question may be, most contracts in our district are annual contracts for administrators, but in past, for attorneys, for the school board attorney for that level position, we have done a three-year contract in the past. Regarding the salary, that's negotiated. We negotiated that salary along with Chairman Alman. As far as where it fits in the range, you know, we have a pretty broad range for salary. If you remember, our first candidate that we looked at had different qualifications, and the salary negotiation was at a much different level than we did with Ms. Cole Palmer. So what I would say to that is, it isn't necessarily, we always start at the bottom of that salary range, it's really looking at qualifications. We didn't necessarily look at what her current salary is right now, we're more looking at what her expectations are for the job that she has here in the district.
Does that satisfy you for that one?
I just feel like maybe we could have started, negotiated a little bit lower, just with the fact that she doesn't have school board education law practice and the certification in... Just my feedback on future negotiations for contracts.
It did start lower. That... Ms. Beaman is prepared to answer your other questions.
Okay.
Or Russi?
Hello, Ms. Beaman. So we have in front of us several recommendations to change our executive director's titles and job descriptions somewhat to now be Assistant Superintendents. My initial comment is I wish that we would have been able to have maybe a work session or a discussion around the reasoning for this or the impotence that is bringing us to making this change, and if you could just provide us insight as to why we're making this change, so that we can maybe have a dialogue or ask further questions as to why this change is being made.
Certainly. The changes are being made for two reasons. One, the first is to just frankly be a better descriptor of the work that the executives are doing that more clearly and reflects the titles across the state of Florida for what the jobs are that they are doing. So Executive Director is not as clear to explain to those of us that aren't in the inner circle of education exactly what they are, and Assistant Superintendent for middle schools or for elementary schools, we believe, is a better descriptor of what they're doing and their role in the district. If you look around the state, you will see that there are Area Superintendents, Associate Superintendents, Assistant Superintendents, and less so the Executive Director. The second reason for the minor changes in the job descriptions is just cleanup to better reflect what is actually happening already in our district. So you'll see that some of the job descriptions will take certain responsibilities off of, for example, the high school executive director, because those responsibilities have been and are being performed by our ESS executive director now. So it's just more clarification of what is happening. And as far as the timing, and I know that Dr. Griffin typically brings all job descriptions to the board, but technically, they are procedures that don't need adoption by the board unless there is a qualification change, salary change, but that's been the practice, and so that is why they were included, so that we can make the reflection of the new titles in the collateral, the calendars, a lot of the materials that are being created this summer for the next school year.
So even though you say there's not a pay change to the employees, there is a pay scale change, and I think that would have warranted a discussion, just so that we could understand and have been prepared for the perceptions or misunderstandings that could have happened as a result of all of these changes.
Well, and I do want to clarify, Member Pennock, there's not a pay scale change for the Assistant Superintendents. For the Deputy Superintendent, the job description, that is a collapse of the Deputy Superintendent job description that has not been updated since 2007, and the Executive Director of Instructional Excellence and Equity Job Description, to better reflect what, again, is actually happening, and that range is, and I will let Mr. Russi explain this, is just a reflection of what has already occurred. But because it's not been updated since 2007 for the Deputy Superintendent, that's why it's been stricken. That was what was explained to me. Now, the promotion, and it is, with the transfer from Dr. Weisong... Now, the promotion, and it is, with the transfer from, of Dr. Weisong, from executive director to deputy superintendent, there is a financial impact of less than $1,000.
And Board members, just to clarify, what Superintendent Beaman was saying is that we don't necessarily bring job descriptions every single year. We have over 800 job descriptions. The salary range that is placed there is placed there when they're brought to the board and were approved. Each year, when salaries are adjusted, when pay changes take place, our salary schedules reflect that, but we don't necessarily bring back every single job description each year. But when there are changes made, like what's recent, what's happening with the retitling of these, we updated the salary range to reflect what's current at this time, but they're not necessarily brought every single year as those change.
Member Sanchez.
Can we get a list of the salaries for our executive directors slash assistant superintendents? Is that what they're called now? I just want to see what the pay scale is for everybody and how many years they have, just for my own records.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Member Kraus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think I need Carrie or Todd for my question. We talked about, some of us are hearing from constituents that our taxes are going to go up, and you're raising, you're raising our property taxes. And so I wanted to compare and highlight the tax rates from last year to this year proposed and what it, what it means to our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Just for clarification too, what we're going to be bringing, or what's being brought forth tonight is really based off of the conference report that was issued by our legislative friends. There'll be one more report, and that's the FBFP second calculation. So the numbers that I'm showing is based on the conference report. The current proposed milages based on the conference report is a reduction that we would be levying against our homeowners. Now, we can't control if their property value goes up, but the amount that we levy for taxes actually is going down, and it's done that for the last couple of years. So the difference really between what is going to occur, or what's proposed right now for the current year, based on the year that we're just ending, is a difference of about .12, a negative 1.2%, or a .0070 milage reduction. Did you want to...
So on an average $200,000 home, what does that mean in dollars and cents?
So just walking through that exercise, thank you, is that if you're, if you have an assessed house value of $200,000 in the current year right now, and if you're part of the Save Our Homes program, you get a homestead exemption of $25,000. So that would bring your taxable value down to $175,000. We apply the current milage rates that we have for the current year that's just ending here, that produced on 200, on 175 is $1,038.45. Next year now, the Save Our Homes program is going to assess a 1.4% property value increase to our homeowners. So we don't control that. That's done through that program. But the amount that we're levying to our tax owners is actually going down. But, so if you apply that to the program, so if you look at the home assessed value of 200,000 in the current year, so for next year, the home value would be 202,800, and that's based on a 1.4% CPI increase that are assessing to the homeowners. They still get the homestead exemption of 25,000. So the total taxable value is 177,800. They would produce, based on our proposed reduction milages, would be $1,053.82. Now, that's an increase of $15.37, but that's due to the property values going up through that program. Did that help?
Thank you. Board members, do you have any additional comments? Member, Vice Chair Pennock?
No.
Member Calderon?
Thank you.
Member Sanchez?
No, ma'am.
Member Kraus?
Just general comments at this point?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, I do. Thank you. I wanted to share a story that affected all of us in Orlando. Five years ago, we woke to the news of an act of terrorism right in our own backyard, the Pulse nightclub shooting, which, which cut short the lives of 49 beautiful people. It's a story of enormous pain, and it's a story of the power of love embracing those that we're most grieving. It's a story of faith in the support of our police, our first responders, our doctors, our nurses, our clergy. They organize prayer vigils. It's truly a story of love. It's been five years since this tragedy struck, but it's also been five years since love overcame hate. Our communities came together to grieve, to heal, to remember. The mantra from this event is to honor them with action. Today, I would like to ask my board members to take that action with me. Our school community is not immune to the effects of discrimination. Almost two of 10 students identify as LGBTQ, according to 2019 CDC data. And I feel a determination to acknowledge the bravery that our students show against bullying, the need for acceptance, and to acknowledge the emotional and mental torment that they live every day. It is important to me that we let our students, teachers, and staff know that we see you, we hear you, and we welcome you. June is Pride Month, and we, as a school board, need to acknowledge our LGBTQ community and let them know that they are safe with us, that we will always fight for them, just like we fight for all of our students every day. All means all. This is why, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to this board to formally recognize LGBTQ Pride Month this June 2021, for the very first time in our district's history, and for every June to follow. We need to be brave and let every student, faculty member, and staff member who walk through our doors know that they are safe and they are welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. There a second to the motion?
Second it.
Any discussion? Member Calderon?
I feel as a board, we spent a lot of time in the last few years updating our policies, and that of nondiscrimination, both for students and staff. And I think we have made our voices in that. And the practice has been, and the school board attorney can jump in, but our practice for resolutions or declaring months usually comes from an outside entity with public notice and ability for us to discuss beforehand. So for that reason, while I respect you sharing and, and taking a stand, I don't think at this point in time, we're following our practice.
Let us conduct our meeting.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So I guess with the motion, I mean, is, is the intent, should I put this, is this more along the lines of a ceremonial recognition of Pride Month as opposed to some sort of a, you know, a formal declaration of holidays or nothing like that? This is really just the board expressing that it is recognizing that it is Pride Month?
Yes.
Just for clarification of the motion?
Ceremonial.
Okay. I think that, I mean, I think that's obviously subject to the board. I think that's okay. Terms of bringing the actual motion.
Chair, do we have any comments?
I, what other months or this type of recognition do we recognize from the school board or the school district? I think we should be consistent.
Child abuse, for sure. Black History Month.
Hispanic.
Hispanic Month.
Human trafficking, oh gosh, I can go on for hours.
Well, no, I realize that there, every month has a certain celebration. I'm curious as to what the school board has pushed out as recognition from the school board. I know we've not done resolutions. We typically are, don't do those. Not saying that this is a resolution. I just want to make sure that we're consistent with our practice.
And the two largest, for sure, Hispanic Month, Black History Month, we've done those for years. And then there's a lot of smaller ones that celebrate at different levels.
I think I, I can appreciate what you're saying too, Ms. Kraus, very much. I wish that it had come to us earlier, so we would have had time to process it. Thankfully, I'd like more time, and I know we don't have another meeting in June.
So can we table it and possibly...
Don't have another meeting in June.
That's right, but, or maybe next time to discuss it?
Well, we have a second, so we need, we're having this discussion, and then we'll take a vote.
I mean, procedurally, if the motion's tabled, that means it needs to be taken up at the next meeting, or else it dies. I think we went through this with Member Pennock once before. There could be an intervening supplemental motion to postpone indefinitely, and then the motion hasn't been voted on or ruled, but that would require another motion and a second and a vote. Otherwise, the main motion has been made, it's been seconded, it's, it's at issue and ready for a vote.
Would we bring it back at our next meeting in July after the fact?
I, I think you could, but it would require another motion tonight, probably to postpone indefinitely or to table. And if you table it, have to be taken up at the next regular meeting. That's the, kind of the distinction between the two motions.
So I would like to maybe withdraw my motion and make a new motion that we consider this?
You have to withdraw the second as well, correct?
Yeah, and I'm not sure what you were going to say, Member Kraus, I'm sorry.
That we reconvene after we have time to discuss this? We reconvene this matter?
I mean, if you withdraw your motion, then there's nothing on the table. Can be brought up.
So the appropriate thing is to table then, to table the motion until the next meeting?
You could table it if you, again, that would require a motion to table, a second, then affirmative vote of the board to table it, and then it could, the motion that you've already made could be brought up again at the next meeting. If it's not brought up at the next meeting, it dies. Does that make sense?
Okay, so, so motion to table, and I'll second that.
First signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Pennock, please read the public input statement.
Public comments related to education, the board agenda, and the district are welcome and encouraged. A public comment opportunity is not, however, an open forum to discuss matters unrelated to education, to support or oppose candidates for public office, or to engage in commercial speech attempting to sell a service or product to the board or to the public. Also, public comment is not a forum to engage in personal attacks against school system employees or board members. To maintain orderly conduct, the public comment segment of this meeting may not be used for any other purposes, including presentation of political or campaign issues, matters involving disciplinary action, pending employee disciplinary action, or pending claims, claim, complaints, or litigation against the district or district personnel. Participants are required to engage in meaningful but civil communications. The presiding officer of the board or the parliamentarian may order the removal of any person interfering with the expeditious or orderly process of such meeting, provided such officer has first issued a warning that continued interference with the orderly process of the meeting will result in removal. All statements shall be directed at the presiding officer. No person may address or question board members individually. Each statement may be made by a public, member of the public shall be limited to three minutes in duration. A designated group representation will have a maximum of six minutes. No speaker may yield his or her time to another person. This policy does not prohibit the board from maintaining orderly conduct or proper decorum in a public meeting.
Thank you very much. So I'll call people up three at a time, and you come up to the podium, please, and state your name for the record. Mariana Reyes, Catherine Robbins, and then Dr. Stephanie Baker.
My name is Orlando in Orange County, and I'm here today. However, I have cousins that live in Seminole County, and I am against the mask mandate. It's time to end the mask mandate. Listen to the parents, all these parents here, because it's not effective to the children, and it is child abuse to force the children to wear a mask. Should not be forced to wear it. The masks are affecting the children's mental health and their education, and parents and the children have their constitutional rights and getting taken away. The parents should be able to, to decide. The reason to lift the mask mandate, because the parents should decide if their children should wear a mask or not. We are asking you to please end the mask mandate for the children in Seminole County, since Governor Ron DeSantis has, there was no state mandate, so it's time to end it now. Thank you for your time, and thank you.
Thank you.
Catherine Robbins, and I'm here representing Moms for Liberty, Seminole County, a newly launched. If you don't know who we are, we are a parent organization, nonpartisan. We were founded just six months ago. We're in 19 states, 44 counties, over 15,000 members, and 100 people waiting in line to launch new chapters. If you've seen Keisha King recently on national news outlets confronting CRT, then you've seen Moms for Liberty. Our mission is to hold school boards accountable for decisions affecting our children. Recently, I heard someone say, "A great awakening is usually preceded by a rude awakening." Ten words that could surely be the mantra over our country the last 16 months. Eighteen months ago, the majority of parents naively believed school boards were set in place by their vote for the sole purpose of protecting their rights and values inside public schools. March 2020 changed that. Suddenly facing lockdowns and mandates, parents found themselves in a massive rude awakening. As devastating as the consequences have been, I actually thank God for this rude awakening, because without it, we would not have a great awakening. Ironically, you and school boards across the country, while masking our children, found your hidden motives and operational methods being unmasked. Parents banded together to start researching laws, working with attorneys, talking to legislators, finding out how to recall board members. Today, it's about masks. Tomorrow, it's isolating and segregating the unvaccinated. Then it's CRT being disguised as equity training to skirt new state legislation. The list of offenses has become the proverbial elephant in the room. But parents now understand that we can actually eat an elephant, one bite at a time. One step at a time, we are going to eat away at the unwanted, unwarranted, often unscrupulous tactics you've put in place while we trusted you to protect our interests and our children. We will not be silent. We will not live in fear. We are writing legislation, identifying candidates to run against you, campaigning to unseat you in elections, researching the rabbit holes of where your funding comes from and what strings are attached to those funds. We are awake. We are organized. We are angry, and we know our rights. Enjoy the time we have left that we put you in. You handed us a rude awakening, and now we welcome you to our collective and great
My name is Dr. Stephanie Baker. I live in Longwood. I will have two children this fall at Lake Mary High School. Prior to starting, my son's starting at Lake Mary High School this fall, my children have been in private school or they were homeschooled, so I have no point of reference for a normal public school experience. This was our, our first go at it. I believe this year was, was about everyone trying to do their best under extraordinary and unprecedented circumstances. circumstances. I have worked in the COVID ICU units throughout this pandemic. I am not a COVID denier or an anti-vaxer. I have a clear understanding of how transmission occurs. As you are obligated to our students and to taxpayers, I am obligated to science. I cannot, in good faith as a healthcare provider, remain silent on this issue. It should be about science and nothing else. And if I have learned one thing this year about public school, you guys really love to cite the evidence. You now have an abundance of evidence that clearly establishes that children and asymptomatic cases are not drivers of transmission. Masking, especially under the parameters that this board authorized and our schools enforced, is at best ineffective. And all choices have risk. Nothing is without risk. Children are two to three times more likely to die riding in the car or riding on a bus to school. They are six to eight times more likely to die of the flu than they are to die of a COVID-19 infection. That is fact. That is science. In fact, The WHO just today updated their guidance that healthy children aged, under age 12, should wait to receive this vaccine till we can gather more safety data. Okay? This is because the risk of COVID-19 death in healthy children is near zero, and there have been a recent discovery of myocarditis, especially in adolescent males. Okay? Under an EAU, vaccines are now readily available to anyone 12 and up who chooses this option. The vaccine provides a robust protection to the individual who receives that vaccine, just like the natural immunity conferred to those recovered from the virus, like myself as a frontline healthcare provider. Virtual learning is now a platform familiar to everyone and a free option that any parent can choose for their child if they are uncomfortable with in-person learning. And it should be no different with masks, an option that students and parents are free to choose if they wish to do so. I worked closely with Senator Jason Broder this last summer to ensure SCPS facility rentals were reopened as soon as possible because it was in the best interest of our children and working parents. And I will continue to be a vocal advocate for the physical and mental well-being of all children in the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you. Deanna McGee, Eric Wilson, and Sean Starker.
My name is Deanna McGee. I'm a Seminole County resident and a mom. Many argue that anti-maskers are insensitive to those with a compromised immune system or haven't lost a loved one to COVID. I'm here to let you know that I have lost two parents and have other loved ones with weak immune systems, long-term effects due to this virus. I understand that people are concerned about this virus. It's real. Heck, even now, we have the recipe and formulation to make it, thanks to Fauci's emails. The beautiful thing is that these people have the freedom to decide to utilize accommodations given to them, like grocery drop-off and pickup, masks, virtual learning, early hours with limited capacity, et cetera. I was quite confused at the last meeting after Mrs. Sanchez insisted the teachers were leaning on masks in the class and outdoor activities, while the board's attorney had earlier argued that a policy is a policy and can't simply just be broken or bent. But then again, with recent employment decisions, it seems the board picks and chooses what laws and policies they want to follow. I'm elated that tonight we can expect a vote to end this mask mandate, since I have seen all but one of you utilizing your own freedom of mass, being in this room, at graduations, commissioners' meetings, and other public events. The hypocrisy in do as I say and not as I do would not be a good example for our students. So again, I'm excited to see this unconstitutional mandate come to an end tonight and mask choice be enforced.
Mr. Superintendent, Madam Chairwoman, Board Members, my name is Eric Wilson. I am a lifelong Seminole County resident. I remember when none of this was here. So it is true pleasure to speak here. I'm not going to speak about sciences. I think the good doctors already spoken about that. I like to piggyback off of the moms. What is it, freedom? Liberty, okay. I just want to raise something that every one of us should know, and that's our founding documents. And this comes from the first founding document, the Declaration of Independence. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, and that they are endowed by their Creator with certain inalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, that to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed. That is what our system of government is. You have people here that say they are tired of their children being masked. You have people sitting here tired of people trying to sneak in different divisive topics and subject matters. While I respect your motion, we are all Americans. It doesn't matter whether you are black. It doesn't matter whether you are white, whether you are gay, whether you are straight. We are all Americans. We have had people for over 244 years pay the ultimate price for the liberty and the security that we have today. And the thing that bothers me the most is that we see so many people willing to give up that liberty, willing to say, oh, well, just for a temporary short time, they'll be fine. But we had someone that warned us of this one thing, and that was Benjamin Franklin. He said, "Those that will sacrifice liberty for security deserve neither and will lose both." And it is so great for me to see, all across this great nation, parents, people of the community coming together and saying, you know what? And they're starting right here in the hallowed halls of education, saying, "We're tired of our liberties being destroyed." It is our children, the founding documents, and teaching them what it really means to be an American and not someone who is going to cower to any such controversy. We are a nation of strong and victorious conquerors, and we have proven that time and time again. And it is time, we need to get back to our founding documents, reclaim our freedom, unmask these kids, don't require vaccination. It is a freedom of choice. That is what our founders stood for again. If you sacrifice your liberty for your security, you deserve neither and you will lose both, and we're losing that instinct.
Starker, Emily O'Ree, Kelly Shilson.
Hard to follow that jacket, but I'm going to try. I'm going to outline a couple of reasons why I think that this mask mandate should go the way of the dodo and find its way to the trash bin. All right, let's take a look at who we're doing this for. I've heard so many times, well, we're doing it for the kids. Okay, there's a new study out of Georgia that says that COVID-19 transmission is 37% lower in schools with mask mandates for teachers and staff. It's statistically insignificant when we look at the kids. So who are we doing it for? I'll take it a step further. The Peaster Independent School District, as most of y'all have heard, most of y'all know, they didn't do anything. No social distancing, no masking, no mandatory quarantine, none of that. They had no cases of the China virus in the first 10 weeks of school. They left the choice to the parents. If you're healthy, send your kid. If they're ill, keep them home. That's what we do as parents. We make decisions. We don't rely on y'all to keep our kids safe. That's not what we hired you for. Now, masks, contaminations, these things get dirty. I have a daughter. I have seen what comes home, and that is not anything that's going to keep my kids safe. In fact, a UF study found that five out of six masks, these were new or recently washed masks in fact, had dangerous pathogenic and pneumonia-causing bacteria. That's a direct quote from the Mass Spectromedy Research and Education Center of UF. No gators. Now, let's take a look at some of these illnesses that these pathogens can cause. Pneumonia, tuberculosis, E. coli, my kid is subject to possibly getting meningitis, diphtheria, Lyme disease? Lyme disease from a mask? Yeah, no way. And UTIs. Again, these were on masks that had been freshly washed or were new. Not good. Heat is hot. Y'all been outside recently? We start school in August, September time. It's too hot to be wearing masks, and we have air conditioners that can't carry the load in classrooms. So we got kids in there sweating, wearing masks, and you're telling me this is a conducive environment for education? I say nay-nay. Now, these mandates, they're inconsistent. Kid goes to school, wears mask, great, fantastic. Nowhere else. SeaWorld, Disney, they're unmasking on the playground, the sports lessons, they're all, you know, huddled up together on the playground, wrestling, kicking each other. Really? And then we go to school and we put on the theater of masks? Who is it for? Who are we protecting? Now, speaking of the WHO, let's talk about some of the guidelines from the WHO and the UNICEF, who just seem to be the end-all, be-all of where we get our information. Now, with regards to children, six to 11 wearing masks, their first criteria to look at is whether there is widespread transmission in an area. Now, I submit to you, we're down 11.9% this week in Florida. That's only 10,000 new cases. The worst weekly outbreaks per person? Hardy, Jackson, Baker, not Seminole. Most amount of cases statewide? Newly added, Miami, Broward, Hillsborough, not Seminole County. None of this adds up to having our kids wear masks. It is not protecting them because really, they are the least at risk. It is simply a mandate that needs to go wherever it came from and leave the choice to parents to do this. Thank you for my time.
Thank you.
As a parent, volunteer, and stakeholder, I felt like Seminole County Public Schools has worked hard this year to do their best to keep all of our students and staff safe. This is what we should continue throughout the 21, 22 school year. Our youngest children are unable to be vaccinated at this time and will most likely not be eligible until September. And this means they won't be fully vaccinated until October or November. We should not be put at risk due to the opinions that are not based in science of their peers or their peers' families. With the increase of cases and the new Delta variant, this is expected to be the dominant strain in the next few months. Now is not the time to change when it comes to masks. As a mother of an incoming middle schooler that is under the current age of vaccination, I'm fearful, sorry, fearful for their journey of the 2022 school year, they're able to be vaccinated. With the turmoil of parents that we've seen for the last several months, I can only imagine the same conversations happen at schools between peers. Here are the examples that our children look at, and the examples that we have seen for months on end are extremely worrisome. We have people calling masks child abuse, which is honestly incredibly demeaning and inconsiderate as a child abuse survivor. Many studies have shown that masks are not dangerous, and teaching your children to be considerate to others is not abuse. I know after months of yelling, screaming, and temper tantrums that you, the board, are ready to jump ship to please this faith. But many of this loud group don't represent the majority of Seminole County parents and families, and they're not actually stakeholders. They will not have to deal with the brutal consequences that those that are actively involved with Seminole County will. They will not have to hold their child when they lose a friend or teacher. They will continue to homeschool and attend private schools while our families have to pick up the pieces. Many of our families do not have the privilege to send their students to private schools or homeschools, and online schooling is not ideal for children with learning disabilities. In a recent study done by UCF, masks were found to be more useful in stopping the spread of COVID-19 than social distancing. No social distancing in public schools is next to impossible, so why aren't we ensuring that we continue to use items like masks that will continue to stop the spread of this deadly and life-altering virus? We're talking about the lives of children, and even one death or one child that has to live with a life-altering condition is one too many. Is that something that you can live with on your conscience for the rest of your life? Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly Shilson, Rachel Bitner, Jessica Tillman.
Before I make my statement, I, after listening to what I've heard today, I feel like it needs to be stressed that as much as I appreciate all that you guys do, you're here to educate our kids, not raise our kids. That's our job. And at the end of the day, any kind of CRT or acknowledging one group over another is wrong. It's wrong, and it's wrong, and I've seen it in the middle schools, and it needs to stop. That in the house. Nothing about the current guideline, nothing about this current guidance is appropriate for Seminole County schools. The CDC guidance is no more appropriate for Seminole County than gun laws of Chicago or New York City. There are no similarities at all. The CDC guidance was to accommodate the most decrepit, unhealthy, old, and morbid population conceivable, and that is not us. We are not packed like sardines and sunshineless, fair, fresh, airless, chemical-laden toxins. We are a happy and healthy community mentally, physically, and economically. Let's keep it that way. This invasive contact tracing, isolation, and quarantining of perfectly healthy people is straight out of a science fiction horror film, particularly when it's suggested that we subject our children to these policies. Show us the science that backs up your desire to isolate from society entire classrooms and buses of children when one person has a false positive test result from a defective test. Show us the statistics of who is vulnerable and who is capable of spreading this disease while asymptomatic. Provide the science to back your policy or change the policy. Do any of you even know what R not means or PCR, CT for that matter? What is a school policy for a student with measles which has an R not of 400% that of COVID? Well, if your policy isn't four times as draconian as it is for this ridiculous COVID policy, you have a bit of a conundrum on your hands. We in this community do not need lemmings parroting worse than pointless doctrines that do far more harm than good to our children and our society. We need leaders capable of critical thought. If this is not in your wheelhouse of competency, then step aside and let someone that is appropriately proficient assume the leadership role. Our children are at stake, and we aren't interested in entertaining ignorance any longer. There are consequences for intentional harm. Let's not go down that road. Thank you.
For OSHA, a government agency designed to create safe and healthy working and learning environments, there are no efficacy standards on child-sized masks. I.e., a child-sized mask is a non-FDA-approved, emergency-use, authorized device. From a scientific perspective, consider that a single COVID viral particle is between 60 to 140 nanometers in size. Any mask, the pores in a mask are 200 to 1,000 times larger than that. Imagine, if you will, a chain-link fence trying to stop a mosquito. From an ethical perspective, with the knowledge that the mask is ineffective, now consider that we know that the very least damaging effects of a mask are that a child is at an increased risk of infection and a more severe infection at that. Since science and ethics appear to be irrelevant to your decision-making processes, I'm going to speak to you from a legal perspective. Promoting the use of a non-FDA-approved, emergency-use, authorized mask is unwarranted and illegal. Not only did you promote it, you also required it. Misrepresenting a mask as a protective measure against this infection is deceptive practice under the FTC. Let me point out that there is no waiver of liability under deceptive practices, even under a state of emergency. As such, promoting or requiring children to wear masks or any other non-FDA-approved, emergency-use, authorized medical product is illegal. I'll highlight that this includes the experimental, non-FDA-approved, emergency-use, authorized injections, which neither prevent transmission or infection. Note that children are at close to zero risk from COVID, and current VAERS data shows over 120,000 adverse events, including over 5,000 deaths. The children get no benefit and all of the risks. I would like every parent to know that they have the right to and the grounds for legal action against your organization and against you personally for the harm and abuse that your unlawful policies have subjected our children to. I urge you to comply with federal and state law immediately. I urge you to comply with federal and state law immediately and cease all measures or consequences related to COVID within the school system. Any and all future COVID-related measures that you put in place, even under a state of emergency, are contrary to the law, and we will not fail to take maximum legal action permissible.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
May I ask that the speakers share their name and address?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Before I wanted to get started, I want to thank--
So please share your name.
Okay.
Not to one person, please.
I just want to say thank you to the heroes, our deputies, our extra deputies that are here for us tonight. My name is Jessica Tillman. I'm a Longwood resident. Thank you for unmasking our children. They never should have been forced to wear masks all day, every day, for an entire school year. A judge ruled mask mandates to be presumptively unconstitutional because you cannot prove they stop viral spread. I am grateful kids in summer school can breathe again, but you flaunting your mask choice all over this county and this room, teachers unmasking when students are not on campus while students are forced to mask, shows your disregard for our children's health, parents' concerns, and our freedom of choice. Things your advisory board ignored: benefits of nutrition and exercise against disease; effects of long-term mask uses, especially in younger children and children with special needs; other schools and districts that have been just as successful without mask mandates; no difference between districts with or without mask mandates; and parents and students' input and needs. Dan Smith should not have more say over my child's health than I do. Parental rights belong to parents. Parents, students, and staff have the right to choose our own healthcare devices and procedures. That includes masks, vaccines, and this experimental gene therapy. The World Health Organization has recently stated children under 12 should not be getting the shot. You also need to correct the information being sent to parents about recommended childhood vaccines. They are not required. Yet I continue to receive notification that my incoming kindergartner is required to be up to date, and my incoming seventh grader is required to get the T-DAP, and that is not true. Inform parents of the recommendation, not requirement, because it is optional, and parents have the right to make these choices with their pediatrician. Going forward, there should be zero emergency protocols as the state of emergency has been over for 49 days. There should be no quarantine, testing, contact tracing, and there shouldn't have been a reopening Task Force 2.0. The governor and the commissioner of the Florida Department of Education both have said next year needs to be normal. Separate protocols for vaccinated versus unvaccinated is unconstitutional, and none of your business. You are educators, not healthcare providers. Continuing to push one-sided healthcare choices on our children violates your own policies as educators. You have violated many policies and laws. These parents are awake and reading through your own policies. There are plenty of districts that made it through last year protocol-free. Many schools and districts have already chosen to go back to normal. This district needs to do the same. Stop playing doctor and get back to educating our future. This is America. We, the people, choose freedom.
Holly Belner, Leslie Kirchenbaum, Michelle Burrows.
Hello, I'm Leslie Kirchenbaum. I'm a mother, Seminole County taxpayer, and a concerned citizen. This never gets easy coming up here to speak in front of everyone, but here I am because I'll no longer trust you, that you'll have mine or my child's best interest when it comes to being in a public school. I want to be respectful, and I do want to say thank you for your time, but in reality, I'm the one who should be thanked, along with the countless parents here and taxpayers who take time out of their busy schedules, because this is something that can no longer be left in your care to trust you'll make the right choices for our most vulnerable, our children. This pandemic definitely created a huge division in our communities, where we're all supposed to respect one another and the choices we make for our family. I'm coming before the school board to make my voice heard and to let you all know that we are paying attention to what's going on. Court of Appeal rules in Alachua County mask mandate presumptively unconstitutional. According to WHO, I sound like a broken record, COVID-19 vaccines are safe for most people 18 years and older, and children should not be vaccinated for the moment, and I quote. So what rules and policies are we really enforcing here if they're unconstitutional to begin with? Local tyrant policies and rules? Are you getting a clear picture to why we're so many, why we're here and why you see us here every school board meeting? Where do we go from here? How can we be on your side when your continued behavior of going against the grain is evident? Executive Order 21-202 had more than enough evidence to back up its decision to end all mandates that imposed restrictions upon individuals due to the COVID-19 emergency. This was filed back on May 3, 2021. It's June 22, 2021, and our most vulnerable, who keep proving to everyone through countless studies and statistics, that they are in fact the least affected from this virus. They've been used in this sick game for political gain. We should never repeat forced masks on our children. You've awakened a sleeping giant in our community. So if there is anything I'm thankful for in respects to the school board, I thank you for making communities come together again in order to ensure that 2022 is the year all school boards are taken over by the parents, we, the people. Virtual signaler wants to introduce a sexual preference ceremony. Great, that's another thing we will be coming back to fight about. Three months along with Hispanic culture, celebrate culture and ethnicity, not the person's desire of the same sex. Leave our kids alone, make masks optional, and end all COVID policies. Thank you.
Holly Belner, are you still here? You missed your turn. But no, come up, you missed your turn.
I am Holly Belner, a Seminole County resident, and this is actually my first time here, and my situation may look a little bit differently as my children are not yet enrolled in the school system. I did grow up in Seminole County. I went to Akiva, Teague, and then Brantley. My pride runs strong, did. When my husband and I decided to have a family, we intentionally chose to stay in this county for its schools specifically. So now here I am, my daughter's five, ready to start, almost five, ready to start kindergarten, and I lack the confidence that I had in the system. You put many parents like myself in a situation where we feel like homeschooling is our only option, the only way to keep our kids away from the control and the manipulation, and let them learn as the children that they are. Imagine being five, being masked for eight hours a day, and then seeing your teacher at Target, unmasked and social. What does that teach my kindergartner? It subconsciously teaches her that she is the problem, that she's to be feared, when the problem here is the grown adults afraid of facts. I don't want educators teaching my children who refuse to look at data, who refuse to reference research that specifically correlates to the well-being of those that you were sworn to protect. You don't get to determine what our kids do with their bodies. This does not open, or does this not open a dangerous door for us as parents? Where is the line drawn? Force the mask, you'll force the shot? Why do you feel as though you have that power with my child? The power to control and force our children into things that their parents don't agree with? The system's broken. It's not built to help our children. It's not built to educate and empower. It's indoctrination. It's designed to control and to manipulate. Now, I don't doubt that there are educators and staff who are committed to these kids, to their health and to their safety, so I urge you, look at the data, the actual data, not just these headlines. Let us parents make health decisions for our children as we see fit. Asking these kids to wear a mask that doesn't protect them because they can't get a shot that they don't need in order to protect grownups whose job it is to protect them? All we've done for a year now is demand sacrifices for our kids, and they've sacrificed enough. Remember, you work for us, for these parents, for our children, and there's nothing that is going to stop us from protecting them, even if for me, that means keeping them away from this broken system.
Michelle Burrows, Lisa Maria Royo, and Shiloh Charles.
Michelle Burrows, Oviedo, Florida. Good afternoon, Superintendent and Board members. I am a proud mother of four SCPS students. While this has been a drawn-out and much more stressful process than ever should have had been, I want to thank you for doing away with the mask policy today. Aside from the recent leaked emails and lies from Fauci, I am sure you have all seen the recent Florida Supreme Court ruling in Alachua County on June 11 that the mask mandates are unconstitutional, and individuals have the right to self-govern their own bodies under the Florida Constitution. Also, I am sure you're aware that a group of parents in Gainesville recently did send six face masks to a University of Florida lab for analysis. The report should disgust you. It did find that masks were contaminated with bacteria, parasites, fungi, including three with dangerous pathogenic and pneumonia-causing bacteria. This study was done on June 16. For those of you still wearing masks and/or forcing them upon your kids, I highly recommend you read this study and many more that have stated the same thing. I also want to make sure that there is no underwriting in your policies to ever mandate and reinstate these masks in the schools again. For you board members and parents that are pushing the COVID vax for students, while I respect your difference in opinion, I want to reiterate that Florida participates in both religious and philosophical exemptions. This includes all vaccines. I also want you to know that this vaccine is still very much in the experimental stage and cannot be mandated. You are the experiment. There was also an autopsy recently performed on a COVID-vaccinated individual that found spike proteins in every organ of the body, meaning that either the vaccine is ineffective or the virus spreads faster in vaccinated individuals. Even the World Health Organization says it's not safe or necessary to vaccinate the children. There have been studies finding that they are causing inflammation of the heart and pericardium in previously healthy children. COVID is a seasonal virus, just like the flu. It has a 99.97% survival rate. We never mandated the flu vaccine. As such, the COVID vaccine should be a personal, informed decision on the parents. Stated many times by the Florida Department of Education and the governor, kids need normalcy. They do not need to be afraid of getting too close to their friends or their teachers or being quarantined, missing important instruction, especially since Seminole Connect has been discontinued. Let these kids enjoy these years and have a true joy in learning hands-on. They deserve the celebratory events such as homecoming, prom, graduations, and award ceremonies without limitations. I will close with the fact that I have always been hands-on with my children. I help my children with projects and homework when I can, even when I can't fully understand it. I proudly attend field trips, help in the classroom, and surprise them at lunch once or twice a month. I refuse to sit back and not be involved in my children within their learning environments this year. While I respect the difference in opinions within this room, I am entitled to mine and how I choose to interact and protect myself and my children. If you reinstate masks for any reason, if you push the vaccine on my children, if you push parenting out of the public school system, I will remove my children from SCPS immediately.
Hello, my name is Maria Royo. I am a Seminole County resident. I am a mother of a second and sixth grader. I am proud of them and of her experience. In March of 2020, schools and businesses shut down, and we were all quarantined, not to lessen the gravity of the situation at the time, but we took it as a beginning of a long summer break. Didn't leave the house or see friends or family for two whole months. As masks were introduced and mandated to walk into a business, I'm sorry. Didn't leave the house or see friends and families for almost two months. As masks were introduced and mandated to walk into a business for essentials, we easily complied. In fact, we thought it was funny, almost cool, to wear masks. We were taking pictures at Target or at a restaurant with our mask on and posting it on social media, but honestly, it really left this pit in my stomach, like, is this really our new normal? The summer went by, the fall drew near, and there was much talk about masks at school. I don't know about others, but I was under the impression that students would be able to take their mask off at their desks, during lunch, during any physical and/or outdoor activities. We found out that wasn't the case, and my kids also quickly found out it was not cool or funny to be wearing masks all day. My very happy, very social children would come home annoyed, irritated from wearing masks all day, not being able to hug or be close to their friends. My very active 11-year-old would complain of headaches and fatigue by the end of the day. He couldn't even turn around to talk to his friends at lunchtime. How is that okay? Nevertheless, they were very resilient and got through it. By March, my six-year-old daughter would walk onto campus every day without a mask. If she had to wear one, I figured the school could provide that for her. My daughter was bribed several times during the week with candy and/or toys for her to bring her own mask. We did not comply, but my very healthy children do not need to be wearing masks and should not have to for others. My children understand that some people have to or choose to wear masks, and that is okay. So we are teaching them that we do not bully other children to have to wear masks or they choose to wear masks. The same with vaccines. I'm not going to vaccinate my children for them to go to school maskless. So I've done my research enough to know that this is not safe at all whatsoever, and I'm really hoping other parents see that, too.
Hi, Ms. Royo.
I'm almost done. We are here pleading that the next school session returns to full normalcy. My kids love school, they love their teachers, they love their friends. It is a safe and fun learning environment for them, and we just want our old normal back.
Thank you. Shiloh Charles, Lisa Cavelli, Mary Kavino.
Good evening. My name is Shiloh Charles of Winter Springs. I have three children in your schools. I'd like to share what some highly esteemed government officials have to say about schools and COVID. Our Governor DeSantis has expressed that schools should operate like normal this year, like January 2020 normal, pre-COVID, no restrictions. Our Florida Education Commissioner has explained the data showing the face masks do not work, and they do not impact the spread of the virus. Just recently, in February, President Biden, he was talking to an eight-year-old girl, and he said, and I quote, "Kids don't get COVID often. It's unusual for that to happen. The evidence so far is children aren't the people most likely to get COVID, so you're the safest group in the whole world, and it's unlikely for you to be able to be exposed and spread it to your parents." That's our president, guys. The school board is using outdated recommendations from the Department of Health as a reasoning to continue these COVID measures in schools and to quarantine students from contact tracing. The Department of Health has not updated their recommendations since December 4 of 2020. That was 199 days ago. At that time, we were under a state of emergency, and now we aren't. Though when this next school year starts, this policy for quarantining students will be based on a 248-day-old recommendation, which, to be clear, is not a law that you must abide by. The board has stated that unvaccinated children will be forced to quarantine for 10 days anytime they're exposed to a student who tests positive for COVID, whether or not they're symptomatic, right? But a vaccinated student will not. So this favoritism that a vaccinated student will not have to quarantine if they're exposed to another student will put pressure on parents to vaccinate their children. Yesterday, the World Health Organization updated their advice on COVID vaccines, and I quote, "Children should-- I quote, "Children should not be vaccinated at this time for COVID-19. There is not yet enough evidence on the use of vaccines in children," end quote. They don't think it's safe. They don't have enough information on if it's safe for our kids. That was yesterday. So, maybe we go by that recommendation? Is revisit your plan for this school year and remove the pressure that your board has put on your students and parents. By continuing COVID policies in our schools, this board is infringing on our children's constitutional rights to an education and their rights as individual citizens.
Please wrap up your comments.
Does state if the board considers an issue an emergency, it can be brought to attention for an immediate vote. Four more things and I'm done. This violates the Student Parent Rights Section of the SCPS Policy Manual in Section 5780. I quote, "Federal and state law prohibits the board from adopting any policy or rule that infringes upon or waives the rights or freedoms afforded to students by the U.S. Constitution. The district shall guarantee that no student is deprived of their basic right to equal treatment and equal access to the educational program, which is school."
Time, please. In fairness to everyone else, equal time. Thank you.
Yeah. I really just wanted to end, please, just one more sentence. Okay, the Seminole County Public School Lead Mental Health Counselor was quoted locally in the paper saying there's been a huge increase in kids and their struggles with pandemic-related anxiety, academics, and socialization, and I really think you guys need to put mental health of our children at the top of the list because suicide rates are increased 51%. So, just please look at it again for us, okay? Thank you for your time.
My name's Lisa. Before we start on the mask mandate, I do want to say one thing about the bully situation that you spoke about earlier. It goes both ways. I have children who have been bullied all year in high school for their patriotic, Trump-loving [applause].
Not pleased.
For having a father in law enforcement. You have no idea how many hate comments on the internet my children receive. I do, I have pictures of every single one of them. You have no idea how tired it is to be one-sided in the schools. It's exhausting. So, when we talk about bullying, it goes both ways. You want to show kindness, you want not to bully. It goes both ways for our children on all sides. I agree, all sides. And that's what I teach my children, but they don't get the same respect from teachers and from students. Okay. Have you surveyed parents to see how their children's mental health is doing? I can tell you in my small world, it's not going well. Two of my friends have had, their children baker acted multiple times for suicide attempts. These children were fun-loving, amazing, outgoing, social children who have found that masks isolate them. One of them, who is a middle schooler, even wrote a paper on mask and isolation and the damage it has done to her. I thought a doctor had written it, it was so amazing. They're the stories you need to hear. This is real life. You can read what you want on the news, but that's real life. This is damaging. Data released from the Centers for Disease and Control and Prevention found the visits to emergency departments for suspected suicide attempts by adolescent girls are over 50% in the past year and a half compared to 2019. A study by the CDC also found that the emergency department visits related to mental health were up 24% for ages children five to 11 and 31% for children 12 to 17. That's horrible in 2019 compared to 2019. Have you called around to see if you can get an appointment with a psychiatrist, a therapist, a counselor? My friends have. They can't get them. It takes weeks. A child who's suicidal, they can't get them help. And when they do, it's through Zoom. Zoom! These children are isolated, and they want to Zoom them. How sad, how ironic. A study at University of Florida, you've heard that multiple times tonight, I'm not going to repeat it, I'm sure you've read it. That's frightening. That should frighten all of us if that's what a mask does. I'm tired of the hypocrisy because if this pandemic is true, I can guarantee you I would not be standing here this evening. I am not a mask wearer, social distancer, I refuse to get vaccinated, same with my family. I have not stopped living my life, nor have my children. So, if this pandemic was [applause], all of us would have been sick by now. I've been around people multiple times who have had COVID and not once have any of us caught it. I watched on a Tuesday night during the school year, my son received an amazing award at his high school, and they were told to wear a mask. A week later, we got to go to his graduation not wearing a mask.
Your time, please wrap up.
Oh, wow, okay. I have watched sons, I have watched soccer teams jump on top of each other and love each other, yet they can't have a prom or homecoming. Enough is enough. We've watched the hypocrisy with everybody. We've watched it not just here, but in life. It's really simple. We need to keep our children safe with their immune system, keep it strong. This is not fair what we have done to them. I make sure my children take vitamins, exercise, eat healthy, et cetera. Let me parent my children, please. You've heard the WHO COVID-19, you don't need me to repeat that. I'm not against vaccinations, I'm against being an experimental guinea pig, and so are my children. Please make it mask optional next year, do the right thing. One last sentence, a school here in town, private school, hardly had a mask mandate the entire year, not one COVID outbreak at all. That just tells you it is possible. Thank you.
Mary Kavanagh, Nina Sandberg, Drake Wertz.
My name is Mary Pulis Kavanagh, and I come to you as a Seminole County taxpayer. My children were in Seminole County schools. I'm also a special needs advocate, I'm an author, and I'm a professional. Here are two reasons children should not be wearing masks at school. Virus particle slips right on through the mask. This was even admitted by Fauci in an email obtained in a recent FOIA request. Number two, impedes flow of oxygen in your system. We do have a scientific way to measure this. It is called a pulsox meter. 98 to 99 is in the normal range. 92 or below is in the hypoxic range. To put this in perspective, if your level is below 88, supplemental oxygen is approved by the insurance company. In a recent experiment in Florida, when people tested their oxygen levels with their mask on outside in front of a courthouse, no one was above 92 within a few minutes of mask wearing. The average range was 86. As far as history goes, we are told DDT, Agent Orange, and even smoking Camel cigarettes for pregnant women were safe, and we now know they were not. Did you hear about the case in China where two teenage boys wearing masks at school died? There is zero science to show wearing masks is safe unless you are a plant or a medical professional working around a field that must remain sterile. According to the Occupational Safety and Health Administration, humans wearing masks caused a following health conditions at a resting state. There are three: increased breathing, accelerated heart rate, impaired thinking, and coordination. Other effects include faulty judgment, nausea, vomiting, loss of consciousness, exhaustion, convulsions, and cardiac standstill, which follows death when your heart stops. How many children experienced these warning signs from their body these last 16 months? All these conditions affect cognition, which is a very important necessity to learn and is the main purpose of going to school. According to Dr. Marguerite Greath Brison, who's an MD, a PhD, a consultant, a neurologist, a neurophysiologist, with a PhD in pharmacology, with special interest in neurotoxicology, environmental medicine, neuroregeneration, and neuroplasticity, this is what she says. "The rebreathing of our exhaled air will without a doubt create oxygen deficiency and a flooding of carbon dioxide." We know the human brain is very sensitive to oxygen deprivation. There are nerve cells in the hippocampus that can no longer than three minutes be without oxygen. They cannot survive. Once the nerve cells are lost, they can no longer be regenerated. What is gone is gone. Here are the warning signs: headaches, drowsiness, dizziness, issues in concentration, slowed reaction time of the cognitive system.
Your time, Mary.
And here's a picture of the brain, a normal brain, and then there's also a picture of an oxygen-deprived brain. And I hope you all really start paying attention to what he said.
Regarding bullying, it is a historical fact that my child was bullied for months inside of Tuscaloosa Middle School by staff and students alike. Dr. Griffin refused to stop the staff from abusing my child, no matter how many times I asked him to make it stop. That was child abuse, Dr. Griffin, and you are responsible. For six years, the school district has failed to order and distribute textbooks for academic subjects under Walt Griffin's irresponsible management. It is a crapshoot whether or not your child is going to have any kind of textbook for science, history, geography, and literature. The district stopped purchasing grammar workbooks altogether three years ago and is only teaching half of the necessary skill sets in elementary school English these days. That is another entire problem. There's no more reading and writing across the curriculum, and the district is now pushing illiteracy. This is not an A-plus school district. You need to make very sure that someone orders and distributes all necessary textbooks for academic subjects this summer. You have a problem that no one is ordering the textbook in paper form, online form, workbook form, or newspaper form. Teachers and students go an entire year in academic subjects with no textbook in any format these days due to irresponsible management. There is no excuse for this. Textbooks are a basic necessity that is supposed to happen automatically, and that usually happened automatically every year from 1975 until Dr. Griffin took over. I can provide many examples, but I am pressed for time. My fourth grade child went an entire year with no textbooks at all for science and almost no written science work, no science study guides, no science vocabulary work, no science tests, and no science project. Everything that the kids learned about science came from the teacher's mouth, and the kids only learned a snapshot of fourth grade science that year. During distance learning, the same teacher was permitted to abandon the Florida state standards altogether so that the kids did not cover necessary content at all during the last quarter. And the teacher was permitted to abandon an excellent free online textbook that was being provided by Studies Weekly to play games on Brain Pop instead. Last year, no one in my child's school ordered Studies Weekly for social studies, so an entire year of American history was negatively affected by having no textbook for history. I can go on and on, going six years back with this. It is enough already. You must order and distribute textbooks for all academic subjects each year in some format, whether it is an online textbook, paper textbook, workbook, or newspaper textbook. You must have textbooks. Speaking of Spanish, you took Spanish out of the curriculum for Rainbow Elementary School this year so that other schools got to have Spanish. We had no Spanish because you fired the Spanish teacher and did not have any Spanish instruction for an entire year at Rainbow Elementary. The kids are getting the shaft because of bad management, and even the teachers are getting the shaft because of bad management, because no one orders the materials they need to teach the kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Drake Wertz. I am a father of three young, beautiful homeschool children. I'm a resident of Altamont Springs, and I'm a leader of youth sports in our community. For an entire school year, parents and even kids alike have got up here and they've pleaded with you to end these dehumanizing and abusive mask mandates. An overwhelming majority of citizens that elected you into office have opposed this tyranny that you've let happen to our future leaders. Throughout this year, we've been called stupid, we've been called crazy, and we've even been labeled as conspiracy theorists. Well, I can concur with the recent findings of the Wuhan Institute of Virology lab leak, the confirmed effectiveness of hydroxychloroquine, and the leaked emails from Dr. Fauci himself citing the ineffectiveness of masks. I think that the conspiracy theorists are on the right side of history. You failed. You failed to take the muzzles off our children. You could have stood in the gap to defy the tyrants of the teacher unions. We stand before you today to say this: unmask the kids immediately. Return them to normal. No Plexiglas desks, no social distancing, no contact tracing, and let me be very clear, if you even think about coercing one of these beautiful children of God to take an experimental and harmful vaccine, you will be met with legal action. Not put any more blood on your hands. In America, we don't know it yet, but our children have been carried away captive. They've been carried away through our education system, through the woke ideology that's infiltrated professional sports, through the sexual grooming and pedophilia that's apparent in the entertainment industry. We wonder why things aren't working. The spiritual walls of our nation, of our families have been broken down. How did this happen? The reality is, we have turned our back on the truth of God. We need to realize where we are and why we're here. We're in the same boat, parents, no matter our situation. For the parents in this room, it's time to get up and dance. Cutesy time's over. We need to run for precinct committees. We need to run for city councils. Run for a school board and primary these rhinos in this room. We will not embrace the lie or the deception any longer. We're going to abolish this broken system. We are working to construct bills for school choice for all. We're done with the corrupt system, we need options available for alternatives. It's time that we stop funding systems and start funding students. Walk away from the public schools, parents. I urge you to stop playing Russian roulette with your kids' values. Pull them out of these indoctrination camps. Private school, Christian school, homeschool, co-ops, let's raise the next generation of God-fearing, patriotic Americans, and let's save our country.
David Meltzer, Lanese Joseph, Laurel DeWilde.
David Meltzer, I am not a long-term resident of Seminole County, although I was born in Brooklyn, New York, and we did move to Sanford, Florida when I was two years old in 1956. Okay? I've been here for quite a while. Here's the difference between following the science and following the scientists like Fauci and his personal agendas. That's a very important point to make. This is not January 22nd, 2020, when they were talking about 2 million people were going to die in America. This is June 22nd, 2021. Some of us are going to debate whether the science was ever on the side of masks, but clearly today, it is not. I truly want to say that I've been inspired, Bombs for Liberty and every one of the speakers. I mean, you've covered all the things, there's really no reason for me to repeat what they have said. But I'm just going to pass on a very simple point of life, and that is, when you find yourself in an unintended hole, stop digging. Okay? I ask, please support the people in this room, and please end the mask mandate.
Good evening, Superintendent Griffin and members of the board. My name is Lanese Joseph of Altamont Springs, and I again come before you, a concerned Seminole County resident. I'm not a parent, but you better believe I am a concerned big sister with young siblings in a public school system in Florida. I would appreciate that you please stick with your plan to do away with these mask mandates. In my native Collier County, they have just started In my native Collier County, they have just started with mask choice, and I'll be grateful once Seminole County Public Schools does the same, along with other districts near and far along the state of Florida. It is not healthy, let alone wise, for children to be in masks all day, especially with the studies in the University of Florida reporting that masks were contaminated with countless amounts of bacteria and parasites. I am also concerned with the COVID-19 vaccine for children. It has caused more problems than it solves, with side effects such as myocarditis, heart inflammation, and blood clots in perfectly healthy children after they receive the vaccine. Mind you, it is still experimental. I'd like to close with the fact that there are parents and concerned citizens on both sides of this issue, and I emphasize that there still be a choice regarding masks and vaccines because it is the parents who hold the decision for what is best for their children.
DeWilde, and I own a small business in Seminole County. I feel like I represent a lot of the small business owners. And we've gone to a mask optional, and we're a dental specialty office. And I know like the big box stores, they're going to mask optional. The entertainment, the movie theaters are mask optional. Schools are even going mask optional. My kids attend a school in Seminole County. It's mask optional this coming school year. And I just got a text from my friend in Orlando, and she goes to a pretty good school in Orlando, and it's gone to mask optional. So it's really loosening up. I just implore you on that. Lastly, I run a thousand-plus Facebook group, and many are here today and have spoken. And so I feel like I represent a majority, a lot of people, not a majority, but a lot of people in Seminole County, and they really would like mask optional.
Bryant, J.P. Pinheiro, Julia Roberts.
I am Lincoln Bryant, and I speak on the side of removing the mask system from Seminole County public schools. I am a resident of Oviedo, Florida, and I am an A and B student. Since the beginning of the 2020 and to the 2021 school year, students have been getting in trouble due to social distancing and mask-related problems. I myself have experienced such problems myself. I sometimes come to school seeing other students nagged at by the staff for mask and social distancing-related problems. I, in one such class, was drinking from my beverage and was told to put my mask on, even though I was getting a drink. Please excuse me. Another problem includes those with glasses. When putting on a mask, it tends to fog up your own lenses. And so I myself, throughout the year, had to go through the constant annoyance of having to take off my glasses and unfog them. This causes us to also lose bits of vision when doing work and going to our next location within the school. In another class, I also had trouble breathing in a mask mostly made of plastic, making me put on my neck gator. I normally prefer a neck gator because it's easier to breathe in. I then got in trouble with my teacher, and I did claim that I had trouble breathing. I was then silenced, and she mocked me over the affair. She mocked me by saying everyone else seemed to be fine, but I'm not everyone. Another point that I'd like to bring up is teachers being able to take off their masks. No, this is not a statement saying teachers should wear masks 24/7. This is simply saying teachers will have their masks off in an enclosed classroom, and students will be still forced to wear masks. I am no longer hiding what I think about this all, and I no longer stand for masks.
tougher act to follow than even the jacket guy. J.P. Pinheiro from Seminole County, Sanford. And I'm here just to voice my concerns with the mask mandate, and I hope that later on today that we will have an unanimous board vote to rescind the mandate completely. We no longer have a county mandate. We don't have a state mandate, and I hope after tonight, we no longer have a school mandate as well. And like others have spoken here tonight, I don't want to go through the same details ad nauseum, but we also need to end all COVID policies at our school next year. We need to go back to the old normal, not the new normal word that we've heard thrown around throughout the year. You know, we'll mention different studies. We've had a whole year of data. You would have so many outbreaks at so many different schools throughout the state, as well as in Seminole County, you got schools with no mask mandates and masks optional throughout the whole year, and also in different counties, and they had the same results as us here in the CPS. So really, mask policy in school had no effect, so there's no really reason to continue forward. You know, we've heard mention that even one death is too many. Yes, we don't want anybody to fall ill or pass away, but there's also been several deaths to children in these vaccine trials, according to the data, so, you know, we should also respect them as well and never think about ever making these COVID shots mandatory at all or a condition to go into school. As been mentioned before, you know, Beth, studies, masks are so dirty, I've seen kids, even adults, nobody handles them properly. If you follow the directions, you touch your mask, you should be throwing it out right away and get a new one. So, again, I hope we have good news at the end of today's meeting, that we have a unanimous vote to rescind this mandate policy. Let's go back to normal. You know, like it's mentioned, we throw it away in the trash can and let us never see this again. You know, like it's been said, one silver lining in this whole pandemic is, you know, you've gotten more parents involved in the system. So hopefully, we can move forward from here, and instead of debating mask policies, we can talk about curriculums and making our county better for our students. So thank you very much. Have a good night.
Julia Roberts, Eric Soto, Dan Smith.
Hi, my name is Julia Roberts, resident of Seminole County, freedom keeper and mom to three young boys. Thank you for unanimously voting to begin the repeal process last month. I believe that you will vote to make the repeal official today. We concerned parents are here to make sure that you do not give yourselves the latitude to reinstate the policy during the next seasonal outbreak. Face masks are not harmless, they are filthy rags contaminated with dangerous pathogens. Quoting an Epoch Times article, quote, "A laboratory at the University of Florida that recently analyzed a small sample of face masks detected the presence of 11 dangerous pathogens that included bacterias that cause diphtheria, pneumonia, and meningitis. Gainesville parents saw six masks, five that were worn by children ages 6 to 11 for five to eight hours at school, and one worn by an adult, to be analyzed for contaminants at the University of Florida's Mask Bacterometry Research and Education Center. Of the six masks, three were surgical, two cotton, and a polygator. Five of the masks were found to be contaminated with parasites, fungi, and bacteria. Other less harmful pathogens that can cause ulcers, acne, and strep threat were also detected." End quote. The mask you believe is protecting you from COVID is actually a disgusting petri dish of life-threatening bacteria. Masking children is gross, harmful, and wrong. As concerned parents, we are also here to make sure that you do not slip in mandatory COVID tests or vaccinations, or segregation requirements into the reopening policies for the next school year. Quoting an Atlanta Business Journal article, quote, "Since these gene therapies do not render the person immune and do not inhibit transmission of the virus, they cannot qualify as a public health measure capable of providing collective benefit that supersedes individual risk. On the contrary, the only one benefiting from an mRNA vaccine," quote, "is the individual receiving the gene therapy, since they are all designed, since all they are designed to do is lessen clinical symptoms associated with the S1 spike protein. The justification to accept the risk of the therapy for the greater good of your community is blatantly irrational. Also, since mRNA vaccines do not meet the medical and/or legal definition of a vaccine, referring to them as vaccines and marketing them as such is a deceptive practice that violates 15 U.S. Code, Section 41 of the Federal Trade Commission Act, the law that governs advertising of medical practices." End quote. If you market these vaccines as preventative, you will be held legally accountable. According to the FDA Safety Surveillance of COVID-19 Vaccines, the possible adverse event outcomes from the shot include, and this is an abbreviated list, death, as of June 11th, the latest VAERS data reports 6,000 deaths following COVID vaccines in the last six months, Guillain-Barre syndrome, aka paralysis, acute disseminated encephalomyelitis, inflammation of the brain and/or spinal cord, transverse myelitis, neurological disorder caused by inflammation of the spinal cord, encephalitis, myelitis, meningitis, encephalopathy, aka brain damage, neurological disorders, convulsions, seizures, stroke, anaphylaxis, acute myocardial infarction, a heart attack, myocarditis, pericarditis, inflammation of the heart or lungs, autoimmune disease. Are these risks worth the chance the shot may help lessen symptoms of a virus that already present as mild and healthy people, especially children? Policies should be objective, reasonable, and based in fact, and limited in scope to the restraints of your purview, education. Policies should not be adopted because they appear virtuous or because they help someone feel more comfortable. The science is and has always been on our side. The U.S. and Florida constitutions have also been on our side. And finally, don't allow our public school campuses to host pop-up vaccine clinics. Don't put a financial incentive ahead of our children's well-being.
Name is Eric Soto. Several properties, Seminole County. Probably pay more than my fair share of Seminole County tax to fund the schools. I'm also the father of six children, five of which may have the opportunity to go to Seminole County schools all. I say "may" because I guess it rests on your decision today. I stood here a few months ago and said that I'll be paying attention, and that I will be pulling my children out of school if you continue mask mandate. Now personally, I've heard a lot of very positive and very fact-based evidence given to you month after month after month after month after month after month. I can't understand why it's been ignored. I've done their research. I'm going to give you a little bit of anecdotal evidence that I'm going to share with you because that's why I'm speaking today. I watched a superintendent today don a mask in order to be within three feet of somebody, shake that person's hand, readjust his mask, and then shake that person's hand again and hug on them. I'm assuming that's because the mask mandate is going to end today because we know it's I don't fault this superintendent for his actions. He's acting like a human being. Now, take an adult and take a child and imagine what has been happening in the schools for well over a year. It has been a farce. To the nice lady that I'm not allowed to address, but some imaginary lady out there, I congratulate her on her strength and courage to stand up in opposition to what the majority of the people in this room want. Just so she knows, only 322 people under the age of 17 have died from this virus. Science and facts would call that statistically relevant. I still think it's sad. How many people have died from pneumonia in that same age bracket? Over twice as many people. I learned today by listening to my fellow Seminole County residents that one of the things found on masks is the pneumonia virus. Is correlation causation? Maybe, maybe not. That's for the scientists to decide, but I think that there is a direct correlation. And why do I think that? Because I read on the National Institute of Health website that they went back and they studied the tissue samples from the Spanish pandemic, and they found that those individuals actually died from pneumonia.
Time, Mr. Soto.
Thank you very much. My last statement for the evening is, I want to thank you, for that you are tired of listening to this over and over again, like the ladies there. Time to start talking about the education of our children and not the indoctrination of our children. I happen to live in Altamont Springs that does not have an A-rated school, and that
Dan Smith, Bella Frick, and Virginia Dean.
Good evening. My name is Dan Smith. I am a Seminole County resident. I've been down here for 20 years. I am a teacher as well in Seminole County Public Schools, and I am currently president of Seminole Education Association. I would like to speak about the upcoming 21, 22 school year. Thank goodness that this summer, hopefully, it's not over yet, but it's going to be a little more peaceful and easier to deal with than it was last year, but there is still a lot of uncertainty. And I would hope we not be too flitter cavalier just to put this behind us, that we don't look at those things. So although I think all of you know that I don't have policies, I have confidence in your decisions, and I've... Well, but that being said, I am asking that you please respect the autonomy, teachers' autonomy in a classroom. That's how they survive, that's how they teach, and that's how they're able to work. Now overwhelmingly, and I haven't spoken to certainly all of our teachers by any means, but I can tell you that overwhelmingly, a lot of them have gotten their vaccinations. They're very comfortable and confident about being around people. It'll be for next year as well. But we do have a small handful that because of health reasons, because of age, they may not be comfortable. So if you do choose to lift the mask mandate, you know, I will stand behind any decision you make, but I would ask that you respect the autonomy of the teacher if they are in a situation where they have health concerns. Rather than being unemployed, that you allow them for that 15-minute period that they be able to control what they have. And if they do have health risk and they do feel the need to have their classes masked, I would hope you consider to respect...
Excuse me.
I would hope that you would respect their autonomy as professionals and be able to do that. It wouldn't be very many, and if it were to come up, as always, I'd be more than happy to work with you on this and see what we can do to get this out. All right? We have precedents regarding this.
Please stop. Dan, continue.
Oh, I thought it was me. We do have precedents in this. We have situations where we have certain food allergies that we allow the autonomy of the teacher to... perceptions in that, and when it does happen, it saves lives. The same thing with any people who are scent or smell sensitive as well. Some of our teachers have eliminated certain cleansers because of allergies or infections, and it does happen. So there is precedence in this. This isn't just a brand-new thing that we have here, and I hope you will consider that. Second point regarding autonomy, a little different, relates to 529, in the moment of silence that is going to take place in the schools this year. Now, considering that I am a New York liberal, that I've been down here more or less an interloper, anybody who knows me, I've always been a fan of moments of silence. I think it's a very good idea. I don't think it's a good idea for the government to be in the religious business, but faith itself does do a lot for our children. I like the silence part. I'm a little troubled by the part, though, that where, although the teachers are not going to be involved in this, there is part that says the teachers are going to be required to encourage parents to talk with the students about moments of silence and make suggestions about what to use time of them. I will tell you, it's a very bad idea, and I would highly hope that you fall short of that. When you start putting the teachers into these policies of religion, it's going to harm the teachers. And if you do choose, for some reason, to allow this to be the case, I would then ask that you hold the teachers harmless. Anything to do with 529, I would ask that the teachers be held harmless so they can run and do what they have to do at the school. When you make silent reflection or anything like that, any type of policy, you're forcing the children to choose between faith and education, and no little guy should ever be forced to do that. There should be no way they have to do that. When we add these type of things in there, we're just giving one more reason for children to be different. And it's really hard being a child, and it's really, really hard if you are a child who is different. Please consider that. Really, really important. In closing, I just want to address the school board superintendent, that the confusion sometimes about what you guys do. It looks like you take pictures, and it looks like you sit up here and listen to people. I know that you do a lot of that. I know that you do a lot more than that, and I do know that you guys are, besides just educating, that you feed the kids, that you keep the kids warm, that you clean the kids when necessary, you find them places to live. You do an awful lot more about their safety. After the Marjorie Stoneman Douglas shooting, you put fences up around the campuses to make sure that they were safe. Now I, I don't see that as an overreach. I don't see that as, as anything more than doing what you're supposed to do in loco parentis, which is what we are hoping that you do. I've had two kids go through the.
Oh, excuse me. Please stop disrupting. His time is not up.
And if you guys could stop talking over there, it's hard to hear.
Sir. Sir.
Excuse me.
Sir. Disrupting the meeting is a violation of policy. Consider this your warning.
That would be a referral.
You have one, you have one last minute, Dan, okay? For your six minutes. You have one more minute.
All right.
From green to yellow to red.
I'm actually complimenting you.
If it came to the meetings, you would see. Happy you've never been here.
But I was referring to the school shooting. It was not meant to circumvent parental authority. It was done to protect children, which I have two kids who went through the school system, and I always felt my kids to be safe. I did not feel it to be an overreach. Now, all children, doesn't matter whether they're white or black, male or female, big, tall, large, or anything, just makes a difference. And hopefully this year, also going to protect our LGBTQ+ students as well, okay? Understand that considering the troubles that they go to, we don't have another year. Please deal with that immediately. Thank you, and as always, I stand by ready to help in any way.
Thank you. Bella Frick, Virginia Dean, Brittany Walker.
Hello, my name is Bella. I'm going to fourth grade. I want to go to school being able to breathe. Wearing a mask, you breathe in germs and can't think. You get dizzy and makes you tired and triggers my asthma. Plus, I can't hear anyone. I do not want wear a mask anywhere because of my medical exemption, but the school won't honor my exemption. Let me go to school without wearing a mask. Thank you. Please. Yes, all my friends feel the same.
My name is Virginia Dean, and I'm here as a parent of two Seminole County school students that were, that did connect all year because of the mask mandates. My children have medical exemptions and yet repeatedly they were not honored. Anyway, I received an email on June 1st from the county saying to make my decision either impersonal or virtual for next year by June 4th. I could not make that decision and did not respond because what happens here tonight will make that decision for me. My question, I know I can't ask a question, rather my concern is, I don't know how to answer that unless I know the masks are optional with no conditions on vaccines. The county hasn't honored their mask exemptions and people need, parents need to make formed decisions. We need all the facts before we could go forward. I also need to know as a parent, will we be allowed to be on campus as a room parent, PTA member, or simply a parent wishing to have lunch with their child? Will shields be dropped? Will contact tracing end? Will class trips and school events, graduations, exec, you know, whatever, will resume? Or will my child be separated by six feet to feel alone? I urge the county to look at the extensive medical and scientific proof that our governor provided for his executive order to end all COVID mandates. Now many people already spoke about the masks that I was going to talk about, all the germs, although no one mentioned the Parents Right bill that's going in effect July 1st, HB 241, which I believe violates, the masks violate based on that order. I don't know if I'm saying right. Sorry, I'm nervous. Nervous and tired. Also, already many people have said many counties have already dropped it, the mandates in many schools, private schools have gone without masks and like prior people have said, had the same results. So I ask you to decide tonight against the masks so that us, the parents, can proceed with what our plans are for next school year. I feel it was unfair to say by June 4th when we didn't have all the facts. We need more time. So based on what happens here, I'm sure many parents agree that's when they're going to make their decision. I implore you to honor medical exemptions, make mask mandates optional. Our just children are our future. They deserve to breathe and be children. Thank you for your time.
Brittany Walker, Beth Martin, Gerald Martin, Ed Meesum, and Judy McElroy, and that will be the last in-person speaker.
Good evening. I'm Brittany Walker. I'm a resident of Lake Mary, Florida. I think it's really sad and really crazy that we're still here talking about this same mask issue, but here we are. I wasn't going to make a public comment tonight because I do believe and hope that enough board members have an idea of what their constituents want to see and will do the right thing tonight. I do truly believe that will happen. The reason I decided to make a public comment, I wanted to share a story based on board member Christine's motion earlier during this meeting. A few weeks ago, I took my three-year-old son to Greenwood Lakes Park to play on the playground. Greenwood Lakes Park is right in between Lake Mary High School and Greenwood Lakes Middle. There was a group of children, probably around the age of 12, they got released from class and many of them go to the playground after school without principal supervision. There was a girl there with short blonde hair and a group of kids were bullying her and calling her asexual, and she was fighting back, saying, "I'm not asexual," you know, and just she, I could just tell she was mortified and, and she was being bullied. So I walked over there and I was like, "What the heck's going on? Where are your parents?" You know, cut the group, just divide it all of them. My point is here is that when you are creating diversity celebrations and diversity groups, all you're doing is creating more division and, and you are now, and another thing too is why are we taking the LGBTQ movement into the public school system? The LGBTQ movement is celebrating sexual preference, okay? I don't want my child even thinking about sex, okay? And I care. Pulse nightclub was devastating to me. I laid in bed that entire next day because I could not believe it happened. I have gay friends. My sister-in-law is gay. They are sitting back saying, "Why are these people taking advantage of, you know, our group and our class of people to put us on a pedestal?" You know, there's a difference between equality and equity. What you guys are creating is not equality, it's equity, okay? You are giving people, because of who they choose to have sex with, you know, more resources or, or you're celebrating them more, which is putting other people, you know, at risk of, of being isolated and being discluded from certain types of events. Eric made a great point earlier about freedom and, and, you know, we're all Americans. That, like, why can't we just get back to that? Why can't we just get back to being a school system that celebrates? Bullcrap out because I personally experienced the bullying to a girl because of her haircut and she was 12 years old and it still sticks with me and that's a problem too. So anyways, that's my public comments and thank you.
I am a resident of Lake Mary. I have no kids in the school system anymore. They're all out of it, thank goodness. You are all on the school board most likely because you have or had a passion for education, teaching children, the well-being of our children. I don't doubt that, otherwise I would wonder why you were here. I'm sure each one of you wouldn't intentionally injure our children or compromise their immune system, would you? I'm not going to go over all the facts about the, what the mask prevents, which is completely ineffective for COVID and basically doesn't prevent much of anything. Nor will I tell you once again that wearing masks causes harm to anyone wearing them, like blocking oxygen, sucking back in your own CO2, breathing back in your own bacteria. This bacteria, this bacteria you are sucking back into your lungs is causing bacterial pneumonia, which more people are dying from than we know. You all know these to be facts. You've heard them over and over and over again. If you don't know them to be fact by now, I would question what you know. Many people, the, the kids are with the masks on and people with masks on have rashes all over their face. Once they stopped wearing that mask, that, that rash goes away. Not to mention the psychosocial implications that will take us years to reverse on the kids that have had to wear the mask the last year. It's, it's not going to go away just by taking it off this year. The mental issues are, are astronomical and need to be addressed. Some kids are scared to death that if they don't wear a mask all the time, either they will get sick or make others sick. This is not a good way for them to be thinking. You all know this, yet you still want them to have, to have the mask. Those masks are basically a petri dish that you are inhaling all day long. How are these actions for the good of our children? I was under the impression that the school board members cared about our children both physically, emotionally, and educationally. Maybe I was wrong because actions speak louder than words. Governor DeSantis said months ago, "No more masks, the mask mandate is gone." And instead of complying, the school board and your legal team looked for a loophole to keep the mandate going until after the kids were out of school. It should not even be on the agenda going forward. It should have been done already. If you are not here for the best interest of our children, why are, you know, why are you here? If you, if you don't have their best interest at heart, then you should resign your seat and let someone else take it who has the best interest of those kids. One last thing, it is mind-blowing to me to see that our educators, as well as our health professionals in this unprecedented time, are, are not digging deep and researching for the real truth that is out there for anybody who looks.
Hello, my name is Gerald and I live in Lake Mary, and unfortunately, I'm not your friend. I am not your friend. I look at, I'm sure not every one of you are complicit because I can see the supremacy on some faces and I can see other faces that actually agree with us. And when I look at these fine folks out here with these masks on, God bless America. God bless America. God bless America. If they want to wear masks, you want to wear a mask? Wear a mask. You want to get a shot? Get a shot. And many of the beautiful thing about the shot though is that when you get the shot, you cannot sue the pharmaceutical company. But if you mandate children to get shots in the school, you're not protected. You will get the class action lawsuit individually and collectively. I'm one of the most motivated people you ever meet, you've ever met. I will spend my life making sure that happens. So as far as the mask, we're not pleading, folks. You work for us. I mean, the fact that we're out here, people are saying, "Please." No, 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 no. I'm saying we demand. We demand those masks come off right now. Because when we parade these children that have illnesses from the mask, that have lack of concentration from the mask, that have all kinds of mental problems from the mask, there will be a lawsuit. And those of you that, I would make sure that when you vote tonight, make it public that you're against it. Those of you that vote against it, make sure we know that you voted against it because we won't be coming for you, but we'll be coming for everybody else. And so as far as the shot, you know, I saw this caption that made me laugh. There's these two lab rats were in the cage and the one rat asked, "Hey, did you get the shot yet?" He said, "No, I'm going to wait until we see what the results are with the human trials." But you know what? This is America. You can take the shot. The only places where you should be mandated is in prison because you have no rights. We have rights, sir. We have freedom. We have rights. And, and another topic, not only do we get rid of the masks, get rid of the social distancing. I know, and there's no, there's nothing social about distancing at all. And just like, just like all these people who have researched hours and hours and hours, and I, I look at you all up there and, and what do we get? We get LGBTQ, LBGQ, whatever it is. I don't have anything against those people. We should love all people. But we all should have the ability to voice our rights and be able to make a choice for ourselves. So we're not asking, we're demanding. And as far as CRT goes, Critical Race Theory, when I was, when I was growing up, my parents would not allow us to say racist. Do you know how difficult it is to explain a person without saying it's a white person or a black person? And it used to make me mad that we couldn't say race in our household. But now as an adult, I understand because my parents didn't want labels. I don't want labels on people. You know, you put a label because of all the things that go with, you know, you don't say a fat person. We don't say, "Oh, fat people." We don't say that. But when you say black people or white people, what does that have to do with it? And I discovered that the racist were not the people out there.
Your time, Mr. Martin.
It was not the common person. It was usually the person that says, "My black friend," or "My white friend," or "My Asian friend." When you put labels on people and tell people, "Our children," that you can't get ahead because of systemic racism? My goodness. Game on, this whole system. Anybody can get ahead. I got ahead, and just like I got ahead, other people can get ahead. So take race out of the schools.
Your time is up.
Take LGBTQ. Out of the school. And if we cannot trust you all to teach our children, how can we trust you to try to raise our children? That's not your job, that's ours. Thank you.
Ed Meesum and then Judy McElroy.
Thank you. My name is Ed Meesum. I live in the Seminole County park of Winter Park. I don't have any children in the school system, but I taught for 14 years at the University of Central Florida. And I want to talk a little bit about civics. A couple of months ago, the attorney explained that we have due process and the board is following the due process, and I thank you. I appreciate that. 2020 was a tough year. My course went from face-to-face to mixed mode, part online, part off, face-to-face, and then finally went to all online. It is more difficult to teach online than it is basically, especially the course that I was teaching. So it's difficult. After 10 years of teaching, I went and took some courses. I had to have my vaccination records. I didn't have a problem with that. I think people should be vaccinated. My problem was trying to find them from 1959. That was difficult. I couldn't find them all. So I got a tighter test. Found out that I still had the antibodies. I was safe. It was good. So what we talk about, and I appreciate the free choice, folks, that we have in the room, but should we all choose everything? Should we choose not to be vaccinated? That's dangerous. We, really? We, we have a public school. We want to teach our children. That's what we're here for. That's the thing. We talk about the children, but we don't talk about the teachers and the administrators and the other people that work in the schools that happen to be more vulnerable. 2020, we didn't know.
Stop disrupting so he can finish his talk. Thank you.
Well, maybe we should teach also civility in the class as well as civics. Let people speak, free choice, right? Should we choose to let our surgeon choose not to wear a mask when they commit surgery on us? Should we let football players, "Oh, I don't want you to face mask," right? No, we choose certain things collectively to protect us all, to have a better system. I don't have any children in the system, but I gladly pay my taxes because I want a better educated folks. So when I go on social security, they have a better job and pay their taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Judy McElroy. Judy McElroy.
So you have a microphone thing here? I have a whole speech. But I just have to start with the heart. And this is something that bothers me. That is, I see a lot of sometimes, not any one particular person, but, well, the other day, it was rumored that someone fell asleep at the board meeting. I was at one of the board members. I'll just leave that there if anyone was there. But, yeah. And I mean, I see sometimes just a coldness, eyes glazed over sometimes. And I'm like, how did we get to this? It's like, people will want to shake their heads and it's traumatic to say this is Nazis and all that. No, what if we showed pictures of the masks back in the days when slaves were taken and little kids had their muscles on? It is literally to subjugate a person and their soul. What about showing pictures of the Jews and the Poles? My family came from Poland. What did they do before communism came in? They just rounded up all the people they thought would be a threat, threw them in an open grave. I mean, I didn't know these people, but you know how much that hurts? My grandmother came over here to have a better life and oink. Very hard to think about. Right? So as I intended to start this speech was to define mafia. We all know what a mafia is. It's an organized crime syndicate whose primary activities are protection, racketeering. Basically, it's everything stays in a club to protect each other and nothing is off the table. It doesn't matter if it's someone's family. Actually, the mafia started in Sicily and it was called the Casa Nostra, which means "our thing." Now, this is not against any ethnicity because every ethnicity's had mafias. But I'm just holding on to the point of that it is meant to be "our thing." So this would be a group known as a family, a clan, which is a casa or casa. It's a sovereignty that claims a territory or a village or a neighborhood or a larger city to continue its rackets. And its members call themselves men of honor. Men of honor. I mean, this sounds familiar. It's like calling some White House resident decent or saying, "We're fighting for the soul of America." Well, that's true. They have been fighting for the soul of America. And they're trying to take sovereignty away, take our votes away, personal rights, even to worship. I mean, that is literally fighting for the soul of America. It is like we're in this together. Yeah, we're not. I mean, believe the science while the elite media do their best to censor any real science that goes against them. Have the people so delusional, they're in this sick religion where 2 plus 2 equals 5. Have you heard that before? Now they won't listen to facts when it's right in their faces. So there are many of them, but there are more of us. And we're saying enough, enough of the elites, Casa Nostra. No, it is we, the people. What depths the elite have gone to for power and to abuse our communities and our very children, we're not in this together.
Your time, Ms. McElroy.
Okay, I think I've said enough for now.
Thank you.
God bless you all. Thank you.
Board members, we probably have an hour and a half to two hours of public comment that will be read. Do you want to take a brief break? We're going to take a brief recess.
One could take their seats, we're going to reconvene. Board members, please take your seats. Abby.
Yeah, I'm too.
Please take your seats, we're going to reconvene our meeting. Ms. Marimus, please start to read the public input.
Madam Chair, I have thirty comments that were emailed to me today for, um, for, to share a public comment. The first, Dr. Griffin, if you would watch the timer for me as I can't see it as I'm reading. The first comment comes from Charlotte Bittner of Longwood. And she writes, "This is my daughter's application for her comment to read at the board meeting. My name is Charlotte Bittner, I am nine years old, I do not understand why you said that we had to wear masks all day at school. I am nine years old and even I know that masks do not stop you from getting sick. A mask actually makes you sick. If I know this, you must know this too, right? Dr. Fauci said it on TV a bunch of times. I'm sad because I lost my friends during all this time. My friend's mom believed that the things that people like the school board were saying about masks. They thought that me and my mom were dangerous and crazy because we didn't wear masks. Me and my mom are not dangerous and crazy. Forcing children to cover their nose and mouth so they can't breathe for hours every day is dangerous and crazy. You made a mistake, I forgive you, I wonder if you are sorry for what you did." The second comment comes from Melissa Simmons from Castleberry. "My name is Melissa, I'm the mother of a seven-year-old, a small business owner, and I'm an executive board member for Florida Freedom Keepers. With over 5,000 members, we advocate for medical freedom, bodily autonomy, and informed consent. We are a grassroots state chapter of Freedom Keepers United, a global organization with over sixty chapters and growing. Tonight, I'm once again writing to oppose mask mandate for our children. I removed my son from public school in August of 2020. After seeing this last year of how Seminole County treats public school children, parents, and staff, it is clear I made the right choice for my family. I was shocked to witness the manipulation, bullying, psychological and physical harass harassing and harm that were continually inflicted upon our youth. It was disgusting to witness and to continue to see that mask mandates haven't been lifted when so many other counties have already stopped them is just another sign of how Seminole County political games and government overreach has gone too far. Individual children, adults, parents have the right to determine what covers their mouth. June 11th, 2021, a Florida appellate court ruled that mask mandates implicit the right, implicate the right to privacy clause in Florida, in, in the Florida Constitution. The ruling further states, even in a pandemic, the Constitution cannot be put away and forgotten. Necessity is the plea for infringement of human freedoms. The right to privacy is a fundamental one expressly protected by the Florida Constitution, and any law that implicates it is presumptively unconstitutional. After this ruling, Seminole County School Board will not be legally or fundamentally able to continue with a mask mandate without violating the Florida constitutional and this ruling. There is no state mask mandate, no county mask mandate, and the mask mandates for schools ends tonight." The next comment comes from John Mazanovic from Oviedo. "I value prudence over politics. SCPS did not, did an outstanding job of keeping our kids safe last year by following a rigorous regime that included social distancing, contact tracing, proactive quarantining, and mask wearing. I understand that these measures are, were a substantial burden to the school district administrators, teachers, employees. It was a far greater burden for them than those who simply wore a mask. It worked. I ask that you maintain as, as many of the aforementioned protocols as is reasonably possible with the guidance of epidemiologists and doctors. There are still a very large portion of our school-aged children who are not yet vaccinated, and those eleven and under have no vaccine available at all. Many of the kids have pre-existing conditions that make them far more vulnerable to serious or deadly complications from coronavirus. To discontinue mask use at this time is premature and serves only to jeopardize the most vulnerable children for no other reason than to appease those whose personal political, personal politics have obscured one of the tenets of our country's governments was founded on to promote the general welfare. Wearing a mask does not diminish your right to speak, worship, move about, buy, shoot a gun, or anything else. It only serves to protect our community. Please choose prudence over politics." The next comment comes from Robert Degane of Winter Springs. "Thank you for taking the time to read my letter, and thank you for the important work that you do to make Seminole County School District a great place. The, the past year has been hard for my two children with both being in a virtual learning environment for the complete year. I am writing to you as a concerned parent because my children would like to get back to their back, their brick-and-mortar schools with their friends in face-to-face settings. However, I am concerned for the health of my children, the health of the teachers, and the health of my family that my students will come home to daily." I know there is an undercurrent in this county right now, in this country right now, that somehow made protecting health a political issue, and those same undercurrents are prevalent in Seminole County, Florida as well, even as there is more contagious and deadly variants taking hold in America. I know vaccines are now available to most age groups at this point. However, as mentioned above, there's a major vaccine hesitancy going on in America. Additionally, there is no vaccine available for children below the age of twelve years old. Having said that, I want to express my desire as a parent in Seminole County to continue to follow the CDC guidelines when opening schools up in the fall of 2021. Those guidelines include which Seminole County had in place all last year with no major school outbreaks, universal and correct use of masks, physical distancing, handwashing, and respiratory etiquette, cleaning and maintaining healthy facilities, contact tracing in combination with isolation or quarantine. A recent study from the University of Central Florida published by the Journal of Physics of Fluids found that aerosol transmission routes do not display a need for six feet social distancing when masks are mandated. Continuing the results highlight that the mass transmission probability does not decrease with the increased physical distancing, which emphasizes how much mask may be the key to increasing capacity in school and other places. The science is showing that masks work additionally with vaccines. There is still the possibility of infection and being a host. However, the mask properly worn in the trans, warned, the transmission risk is greatly lowered. I have faith that you will make a sound decision rooted in science to protect our children's health, keep the mask mandate. Respectfully, Robert." The next comment comes from Bethany and Eric Bax of Oviedo. "Dear Madam Chairman Allman, Vice Chairman Pennick, Members Calderon, Kraus, Sanchez, and Dr. Griffin, we are parents of the, of SCPS elementary students and concerned members of the community. I am, we are writing to support current and continued SCPS policies regarding COVID-19 safety protocols throughout the summer and into the 2021 school year. We implore SCPS executive leadership to continue following scientific guidance and community health indicators in their decision-making and craft policies and practices that benefit the whole of the school community. Approximately half of the SCPS student body population is currently ineligible for the vaccine. Thus, it is critical that SCPS continue to follow the, the CDC and prevention guidelines for masking, distancing, and cleaning until all have equitable access to a vaccine. We are asking that you continue to proceed with caution in your decision-making, especially as it pertains to children under twelve years of age and their family members, and faculty and staff of elementary and middle schools. Until the vaccine is available and accessible to all age groups for an adequate period of time, the best way to protect the health and ongoing and consistent education of our children is to keep current safety guidelines for the foreseeable future and follow CDC guidelines for safe and phased transition within our schools. This includes masks, especially for the elementary and middle school students. If safety measures are removed too early, the virus will spread, will cause continued and new issues, and lead to serious interruptions in academic progress and staffing across schools. Over the past several months, we have heard continued fallacies presented by the school board, presented to the school board about the virus, mask vaccines, and what has occurred over the past year in the schools. That is, school, students forced to wear dirty masks, students forced to wear masks in outdoor exercises. These narratives are dangerous and not grounded in science or facts and lack any concern for our understanding of public and community health and safety. Folks speaking tonight and in prior weeks continue to fail to understand that my mask protects you and vice versa. We can choose to send our child to school with a mask, but we, they need others to do the same to ensure there is no spread of the disease, especially with such low vaccination rates in our community and the introduction of COVID variants in the U.S. Further recent research supports mask mandates and the, and find that the ventilation system and mask usage are most important for preventing transmission. The numbers have not changed much since the prior letter signed by many of the members of SCPS community supporting the continuous of ongoing safety measures per, see prior letters submitted on six one and five nineteen. There continues to be high risk of transmission in Seminole and surrounding counties. We ask that you consider these community health indicators, including but not limited to transmission rates, vaccine, vaccination rates, ICU capacity, and positive test rates of Seminole and surrounding counties, and take into account research information on COVID variants and COVID impact on children. We appreciate the cautious approach you have thus, you've taken thus far, grounded in scientific evidence and effective public health practices. We only ask that such efforts will continue moving forward sincerely, Dr. Bethany Bax and Mr. Eric Bax." The next comment comes from Rebecca Sarwi of Port Orange. "My name is Rebecca Sarwi, I'm a mom of two registered nurses and vice chair for Moms for Liberty Volusia Chapter. I want to address the mask policy and notify you that as of July 1st, the parental bill of rights will be signed, and you will be in violation of it if you mandate any such medical procedure or devices such as masks for our children against parents' wishes. Our parental rights don't end at the classroom door, and unfortunately, in today's society, we need a bill of rights to state such as true. It will be essential that you repeal the policy effective immediately. I tell you, you will not have to worry about liability against you for COVID-related claims. You will need to worry about the plethora of lawsuits for violating the parental right, bill of rights if you mandate any testing, masks, or vaccines for our children. In relation to the COVID injections, if you as a board recommend or encourage or endorse this experimental COVID injection, and especially if it, this is offered on Seminole County schools property, you had also better be prepared for the liability that may ensue. The pharmaceutical companies are completely absolved of liability on this experiment. Therefore, liability will fall on you, the school board, and the blood of our children harmed or killed from this experiment, from this experiment will be on your hands. Don't get yourselves involved, stay out of this process, and do not give your explicit or passive approval of the risky medication by allowing this experimental injection to be given on school property. Especially of concern is that it would be given to children, the children of our, of our county who we need to protect from harm, not endorse their participation in an experimental medication with known side effects and deaths that have occurred in their age group, in their young age group. You were elected to your position to make education decisions, not health decisions. I respectfully ask that you stay in your lane unless you also want the liability of practicing medicine without a license. Board members, you took an oath to protect and defend the Constitution of the United States. Please do not break your oath any longer by continuing with mandatory mask policies. Remember, our constitutional rights are not given by our government, but were written as a reflection of our rights given by, given to us by our Creator. Our children, these precious children of God, as all of you are well, deserve to have adults who stand for them and respect their personal decisions on masks. Mask choice takes no one's desire to mask away from them, but a mandatory policy tramples all over someone's rights who chooses not to. My ask for you today is to remember that, remember, your role is in education not to control an individual health management and to trend, to tread lightly on these issues to save yourself from major liability. Let's get back to mutual respect, ensuring that individual choices to wear a mask or to not wear a mask is respected, and there is no bullying or harassment in either direction. And let's stop fearing our brother and sister's existence as a threat to our own as this destructive year has brainwashed us into believing. Let us move forward with immediately, with immediately rescinding this policy. We also need to ensure there is no discrimination based on vaccine status and no marking of children or employees with a mask based on these individual health choices. Where there is risk, there is also choice. I look forward to your vote to end the mask mandate tonight, Rebecca." The next public comment comes from Nancy Lloyd of Altamont Springs. "Our nation is blessed and to be composed of ethnic diversity, religious diversity, economic diversity, and social diversity. During my Seminole County teaching career, skin color was not an issue, it has become today. Why is that? Over the past fifteen years, something changed, and the unity that, that existed took a huge step backwards. It saddens me greatly how this has become a divisive topic and even a reason for promotion. The current belief that systemic racism is rampant in our country has given rise to the 1619 Project created by Nikole Hannah Jones. Schools like Teachers College, Columbia University provide conferences such as Reimagining Education, Teaching, Learning, and Leading for Racially Just, Racially Just Society, July 12th through the 15th, 2021. These teachers' trainings are centered around racial injustice, educational inequalities, widening opportunity gaps, equality, equity, pedagogy, racial and socioeconomic inequalities, et cetera, promoting division, not unity, and indoctrination over education. In my email response, Dr. Jason Weisong stated Seminole County Public Schools did not and will not incorporate critical race theory into curriculum because it is not a part of the educational standards or required instruction topics identified in state law. Furthermore, SCPS will comply with State Board of Education Rule 6A-1.094124, as adopted on June 10th, 2021. I am still awaiting a reply on training involving the 1619 Project, Reimagining Education, White, White Privilege, Racism, Social, Economic, and Political Inequalities, Individual and Community Oppression. The State Board of Education Rule 6A-1.094124 includes the following. Examples of these theories that distort historical events and are inconsistent with the state board-approved standards include the denial or minimization of the Holocaust and the teaching of critical race theory, meaning the theory that racism is not merely the product of prejudice, but that racism is embedded in American society and its legal system in order to uphold the supremacy of white persons. Instructions may not utilize materials from the 1619 Project and may not define American history as something other than the creation of a new nation based largely on universal principles stated in the Declaration of Independence. Instruction must include the U.S. Constitution, the Bill of Rights, and subsequent amendments. In light of the extensive umbrella that is CRT, I am asking the board members to carefully examine all teacher and administration, administrator training to ensure that this rule is being followed. Thank you for following up on this. I want my grandchildren to be able to continue playing with children of all skin colors without thought of racism, just as my daughter did thirty years ago, with gratitude, Nancy Lloyd, Altamont Springs." The next comment comes from Jeffrey James of Longwood. "My name is Jeffrey James, and I am the father of a seventh grader at Greenwood Lakes Middle School. I am writing this letter in opposition to mask mandate and any push by the school board to pressure parents and students to get the COVID jab or COVID testing to attend school if a child has any cold flu symptoms. The survival rate of a person has, if a person has COVID-19 is ninety-nine point nine eight percent. There are highly effective treatments available such as hydrochloroquine and ivermectin. We, the people, live in USA which is a constitutional republic and is under attack by enemies, foreign and domestic. There are information wars taking place evidenced by mainstream media and big tech censorship. If you are unaware where you can find truth on these matters, I strongly recommend that you search on www.duckduckgo.com and search within the American Frontline Doctors, which will inform you about the ineffectiveness of face coverings and why the four different experimental drugs, vaccines, being heavily marketed as safe and are toxic and realistically have, offer zero protection from COVID. Please choose wisely and do not vote to mandate any face coverings or proof of COVID vaccines and/or COVID testing to attend school. Sincerely, Jeffrey James." The next comment comes from Jonathan Riches of Sanford. "My name is Jonathan Riches and born to ride for forty-five and community patriots. Please read this public comment statement in the Seminole School Board hearing. I have a constitutional right to be heard, and my statement be put on record. And the mask mandate now, we are going to vote you out. We are coming for your seats. American patriots have had enough, stop ambushing our children, say no to critical race theory. Respectfully, Jonathan Riches." The next comment comes from Tanya Georgiev of Longwood. "I would like to start with a reminder of SCPS mission statement. The mission of the Seminole County Public School is to ensure that all students acquire the knowledge, skills, and attitudes to be productive citizens. Your mission is not to play doctors, not to promote the vaccine, not to stop the spread, not to spread fear, not to build back better. Please read it again. The mission is to ensure that students acquire knowledge, skills, and attitudes to be productive citizens. All we have been asking is to allow parents to make medical decisions for their own children. Our kids' well-being is not in your hands, it is in ours, their parents. Your mission is to educate, not stop the spread. Here is very appable local news, a group of parents in Gainesville. Florida sent six face masks to a lab at the, at the University of Florida requesting an analysis of contaminants found on the masks after they had been worn for just one day. The result, the resulting report found that the masks were contaminated with bacteria parasites and fungi, including three, but with dangerous pathogenics and pneumonia-causing bacteria. There were a total of eleven very dangerous pathogens found on the masks. I will not torture you with having to read their scientific names, thank you, Tanya, but they were contaminated with bacteria-causing pneumonia, tuberculosis, meningitis, diptheria, and so on. And these masks have been forced on our children by six people who are sitting here today. We would like to ask you to stop enforcing mask, social distancing, contact tracing, plastic dividers, and coerced vaccinations. Instead, let the kids socialize normally, see their faces and smile, bring back field trips, parents volunteering, social interactions, teachers, teaching, and not policing mask-wearing. Please remember, the CDC is not a lawmaker, it is an agency which only provides guidance. They are also recommended limiting, limiting added sugars, but y'all offer daily PB and J sandwiches, cookies, and ice cream in the cafeteria. So I guess you haven't been always listening to them, only when you want to. We, parents, have elected you to look out for the interest of our children's. We did not elect Dr. Fauci, CDC, Advent Health, or Nemours. You are the ones who are responsible for the decisions made at the school district. If you don't have the kids' best interest, why bother sitting on the board? I would also like to point out that in the last, in the past year, Dr. Griffin has been guided by unknown secret group of medical professionals that advises him behind closed doors. All we have been asking for is transparency. As a group who advises a governmental, a government entity such as the Seminole County Public Schools, the Medical Advisory Committee should abide by the Sunshine Law and announce meetings, provide meeting minutes, and allow public input. Of course, the SCPS lawyers argue differently, but in reality, if you are working in the best interest of everyone, why are you hiding it and why not share it with everyone? If all, if all that you are doing is in the best interest of the district, why is there a need to hide it so passionately that you, that you even have to involve lawyers? Why not share the public, share the public what you have been basing your decisions on? Why does it have to be a secret? Thank you." The next public comment comes from Alicia Del Vecchio from Winter Springs. "Face masks are a danger to our children and must be banned immediately. My children have never worn a face mask and will not ever wear a face mask. As a licensed nurse, I would love for my children to have the option to attend Seminole County Public Schools. You are a teach, you are teaching them not to fear strangers en masse. How can they expect to learn anything when they can't breathe? This teacher, this teaches them nothing but fear. Remove all face masks immediately, thank you." The next comment comes from Shahab Masari of Winter Springs. His comment simply reads, "Please stop masking our children, they deserve better." The next comment comes from Lillian Manachino from Oviedo. "I'm a mother of, of two children in Seminole County. I'm writing to urge you to consider not lifting the mask mandate for children under twelve years of age and under, and under for several reasons. There, these children do not have an option to be vaccinated, and lifting the mask mandate will create a health has, issue hazard for these children, exposing them to COVID even more and risking anyone at home who is considered high-risk. For the families who can't afford health insurance, healthcare, this is an even bigger concern. These children are our lives, and we as parents strive to protect them the best we can. But as this is something out of our control, I beg you to consider the repercussions this will have on our children's lives and health. The cases have been low in schools due to having to wear masks and should be kept that way. My children's lives are the most important to me. If anything ever happened to them, I would be devastated." There could also be lawsuits from parents if masks are lifted and the child is exposed or dies from COVID. Something to truly consider, please. I urge you to vote against lifting the mask mandate for children. Thank you for your time, Lillian." The next comment comes from Dawn Baloo of Winter Springs. "First, I thank the board for implementing the following evidence-based public health practices during the challenges of the past year and a half. Your commitment to safety first has allowed our schools to balance health and learning effectively. Given your commitment to evidence-based policy and safety first, this is natural and appropriate time to reevaluate the plan for next academic year. As the parent of a high school student and a rising sixth grader, I ask you to listen closely to those stakeholders most directly affected by safety policies in our schools, SCPS teachers, staff members, parents, and students. Thanks in large part to effective vaccination programs, COVID-19 cases and deaths have been greatly reduced in our community and nationwide. How our variants are spreading unchecked in an unvaccinated population impose a continuing threat to our public health. All individuals twelve and over have now had the opportunity to be vaccinated and be protected from the virus for the coming school year, but therein remains a significant risk for our schools. Children eleven and under have not even had the opportunity to be vaccinated and likely won't before the school starts in August. Based on the data and CDC recommendations, it is, it is responsible to lift the mask-wearing requirements for our high schoolers, and as parents of a rising tenth grader, I support removing this requirement at high schools. That said, we need to continue the mask-wearing protectance at elementary and middle school until families have had the opportunity to vaccinate their children eleven and under. Without masks, COVID variants are likely to spread throughout the unvaccinated children, leading, leading to quarantines and leaning, and learning disruptions as well as the health consequences. If safety and learning are the top priorities, the most effective policy to keep students healthy and in classes to continue mask-wearing in elementary and middle schools until vaccines are available at, to all ages. I strongly encourage the board to continue mask-wearing requirements for elementary and middle schools. Thank you for your consideration." The next comment comes from Georgie Yordanov of Longwood. "I have been watching and listening to all of your board meetings since COVID-19 unfolded, and all of them, you were asked by concerned parents for one and only one thing that you have methodically ignored meeting after meeting, the right to, for a mass choice in Seminole County schools. You have not only ignored such requests, but you have also listened to them with faces lacking any emotion. It seems like you just don't care of what is happening to the most precious of all of us, our children. It really beats me how could you have run to be elected for this public position when you just don't care about the same public? I will not be going into detail of it is, is it scientific or not. Plenty of other concerned parents have covered that via either speaking or sending you emails in the past. I will simply ask you, when you are, when will you comprehend that enough is enough? You have taken one of parents' basic human rights, the right to make their own decisions when it comes to their own children's health. You have jeopardized many children's health, both physical and emotional, in your district by making masks mandatory for as long as you have. I am not, I am not sure about you, but I know if I was one of you, I would not be able to sleep well at night knowing that I caused something like that. Also, I have spoken to teachers of my children's school and college-level teachers. Many of them think that mask must be voluntary. Regretfully, most of them do not want to express their opinions publicly, being afraid of being retaliated against. Also, just want to point out that a neighboring county, Volusia County, already announced that they are making the mask a matter of individual choice. When will you stand up and do the right thing? You must do it now. We have been patient enough with your careless passiveness. It is time for you to do the right thing, make the mask at schools a matter of choice, not a mandate." The next comment comes from Christine Lemieux of Winter, of Winter Park. And she simply writes, "I oppose lifting the mask mandate for students younger than age twelve as these students are not eligible to be vaccinated against COVID-19. As a community, we need to continue to protect those not eligible to be vaccinated. Christine Lemieux." The next comment comes from Samantha Kirby of Altamont Springs. "I wanted to share my personal experience this past year as a parent of a child with several learning disabilities with an IEP. Originally, we started off doing virtual, virtual learning this year after I had been in communication with several members of the school board, especially education departments, et cetera, on how my child would be accommodated with a mask mandate this year. I was assured by everyone that there would be appropriate accommodations that helped my child succeed. When the reopening guidelines were established, I had then spoke again to several members who told me that it did not matter if we had a doctor's note stating my son had difficulty due to his sensory issues wearing a mask, it was required. The first week of virtual learning was an absolute nightmare. My son's teacher had told me she doesn't know how to accommodate an IEP virtually, and I would need to get in touch with his special education teacher to figure it out. At this, at this point, we had several IEP meetings in which I paid for an educational advocate to each, at each one to discuss how my child has ultimately, was ultimately failing at virtual learning and how we could help him to be successful. In that meeting, I had appropriate documentation from both his neuropsychologist and our MD explaining the challenges my son had at that point. At the school, nurse questioned the integrity of our physician and simply told us that if my son did not wear a mask on campus, he would be segregated from his peers in a corner in the back of the classroom and not allowed to have staff or his peers near him." him, like he was some sort of diseased child. My healthy child, who never misses school due to illness, would be segregated based on his inability to wear a mask. At that point, I had started to drive back and forth to his school to allow him to have in-person ESE and speech services. At this time, he wore a face shield as they tried mask training with him. I found it disgusting that the school district that has never met my son decided what would be best for him over his parent and physician. His ESE teacher was amazing, and she worked so hard and tried to keep him up to speed, but ultimately, it was just not enough. After weeks of my son falling behind, we ultimately had to send him back to school with a mask on, even though his doctor agreed it would not be in his best interest. My son received speech services that he had to wear a mask with all year at his annual IEP meeting. I was told that he was doing well with speech, and his services would be cut. How can speech be done appropriately and accurately with a mask on? That was my specific question for Dr. Walsh last July. Will speech students be allowed to go maskless? And her answer was, “Yes, our speech and language pathologists and other related service staffs will be wearing face shields if the work they do is related to oral communication.” This clearly did not happen. As a result, my son will be going into next school year insecure about his speech. Special education kids were not considered when these plans were made. I was forced to do something with my son that went against what I felt was best for him. My son ended up having several sinus infections, something that has never been an issue with him before. I feel that if the children’s best interests are not being considered, statistically speaking, children are at extremely low risk of having complications from COVID, and at this point, a recent study shows the bacteria and viruses that linger on masks all day long. The next comment comes from Bridget Kovacevic, sorry if I mispronounced your name, from Oviedo. I’m a parent of a child in Carrollon Elementary. I am writing to implore you to keep the mask mandate in place in elementary schools until children 12 can get the vaccination for COVID-19. If the mask mandate is lifted, the school district will not be following the CDC guidelines that state that it is safe to go maskless only if you’re vaccinated. Even if some children still wear masks, their possibility of getting the virus goes up if others are not wearing theirs. Please keep our children safe and wait for masks to make masks optional until all children are able to be vaccinated. Thank you for your time, Bridget Kovacevic, a concerned parent. The next comment comes from Jamie Roselius from Castleberry. Please do not lift the mandatory mask mandate and social distancing requirements that were in place for the 2021 school year. I urge that you keep the mandatory masking and social distancing requirements in place for the start of the 2122 school year and until all SCPS students have had a chance to be fully vaccinated. The past 16 months have demonstrated that over and over, the highest risk environment for transmitting and catching COVID-19 is an indoor setting, like our children’s classroom and shared spaces. The best way to mitigate the risk is through masking and social distancing, and masking works. You’ve seen it firsthand. Seminole County Public Schools have had minimal disruptions due to COVID-19 because of the safety strategies you put into place. Don’t stop these successful strategies, which is keeping our students safe and in the learning environment that isn’t being continually disrupted by quarantining and school closures. CDC guidance maintains that those who aren’t fully vaccinated should mask while indoors. The vast majority of children who attend Seminole County Public Schools, children younger than 12, have not yet had the chance to get vaccinated. Children younger than 12 likely won’t have an opportunity to be vaccinated until after the start of the school year. It is premature to remove the mandatory masking and social distancing because of this fact alone. The United States has a long history of requiring vaccinations and public health measures to prevent the spread of deadly illnesses in children in schools. Many of the parents of children who attend SCPS schools have grandparents who were affected by polio. My own grandfather was. But my parents’ generation vaccinated against this illness that, like COVID, could cause lifelong debilitating issues, did not see the same effects as my grandparents’ generation did. Two generations after my grandfather had it as a child, I know no one in my own generation who has been affected by polio. Thanks to robust public health measures, polio has been eradicated in the United States. We knew how to fight polio in this country, and we had brave leaders willing to do the right thing to eradicate it. And we know how to fight against COVID. Mask to protect against aerosolized particles of the virus, social distancing to protect against droplets, and vaccinations to protect against getting the illness or letting it spread. It is so important for you to keep masking and social distancing protections in place until all SCPS students have had a chance to be fully vaccinated. The CDC predicts that far more transmittable and dangerous COVID variants, Delta, will be the dominant strain circulating in the United States in the fall. 601,000-plus of our fellow Americans have already died, and many millions more are now suffering long-term effects of COVID-19 infections. Please continue to protect our students and staff from the risk of either outcome by requiring masking and social distancing in Seminole County Public Schools. We are so grateful that our daughter has attended Seminole County Public Schools for her entire school career. She has had an incredible, passionate, dedicated teachers and encountered friendly and kind support staff and administration. Please continue to keep her, her classmates, and all of the amazing school staff safe during the unprecedented times by requiring masking and social distancing as we go into the 2122 school year and until SCPS students have had a chance to be fully vaccinated. Jamie and Nicholas Roselius. The next comments come from Kenneth Bentley of Sanford. This is a request to have the attached information presented to the School Board. I have two requests: the inclusion of African-American studies or Black History into the curriculum for all middle and high school into the Seminole County School District, and to honor Mr. Ingrid B. Nathan for being the first African-American student to attend an integrated school in Seminole County. The next comment, 21 out of 30, is coming from Amanda Hutweller of Longwood. I am concerned with some aspects of your reopening plan. Most importantly, treating vaccinated students differently than unvaccinated students is divisive and dangerous. Allowing vaccinated students to unmask while strongly encouraging the unvaccinated students to wear a mask is a recipe for disaster. This policy will lay the foundation for peer pressure, bullying, and segregation. Our youth are not emotionally capable of navigating this complex environment. Next, mandating quarantine for only unvaccinated students provide a subpar and disruptive learning environment for these students. SCPS has prioritized equity and inclusion for all students. Unvaccinated students should not be a separate and unequal subset of our student body. Further, quarantine of only unvaccinated students does not make scientific sense. Studies have shown that vaccinated people can still get the virus and spread the virus. The vaccine was designed to minimize symptoms. We don’t have conclusive scientific data to prove that vaccines eliminate contagion. Lastly, you have not outlined a proper recommendation for students that have natural immunity. You mentioned not having to quarantine 90 days out from a positive test, but studies have shown that T-cell immunity is robust, long-lasting, and possibly even lifelong for coronaviruses. These students should be free from unnecessary mass, social distancing, and quarantine. I understand your difficult position. You are compelled to enact a policy that will create an illusion of safety to make parents and teachers comfortable, but we must acknowledge that our youth are not at high risk. And the vaccine has been available for months for adults and teachers. Please don’t continue to burden our children with unnecessary safety protocols. You are trading an illusion of safety with a lifetime of mental health issues in our youth. People say children are resilient, but they are wrong. Children are compliant, and the trauma you are exposing these children to will take a lifetime to unravel. Please put children first and move forward with a common sense policy in the best physical and emotional interest of all children. Amanda Hutweller. The next comment comes from Allison Prida of Longwood.
Would you please check your cell phones? Make sure they’re on silent.
All right, the next public comment comes from Allison Prida of Longwood. My family and I are looking forward to a normal school year in the fall. We appreciate the mask optional recommendation and would like to see social distancing removed and COVID vaccine pressure for middle and high school students diminished as well. I’m encouraged to hear that the Board and reopening task force are ready as well for some normalcy again in our schools and as we see life go on normally outside of our schools. I would like to hear the following concerns addressed as we move toward returning to a normal school experience for our children. Since the Department of Health sets the communicable disease quarantine standards, why have their guidelines not been updated since December of 2020? Has anyone strongly pressured them to reassess their guidelines since each school board in Florida is legally bound to follow their recommendations, which in turn affects millions of children? We are not in an emergency state anymore. With a current rate of eight cases per 100,000 people in Seminole County, why is this considered a moderate-risk level of transmission? Why have we not moved to a low category? Eight cases per 100,000 people, not hospitalizations or deaths. The death rate has hovered near zero for months. Eight out of 100,000 adults and no deaths is not a moderate risk for most people in real life. Are these cases asymptomatic or like a cold or flu or needing hospitalization? If anyone is asking further questions and pressuring the DOE for answers and resolutions because their guidelines affect our everyday life? I am worried for that you are finally naturally natural immunity in our discussions regarding immunity from COVID. What I do not understand is why is there only a 90-day period to account for natural immunity for school quarantine purposes when studies have shown natural immunity can last years, such as we have from other coronaviruses? Has anyone asked this question and made decisions for our schools based upon the current and not outdated scientific studies? Realistically, social distancing, even three feet, is not feasible in our schools where distancing creates hardship and stress for both students and teachers. We have learned a lot of information about this virus over the last year, and half of the schools should be operating fully normal by now. If restaurants and stores can be full-capacity and pack customers of all ages in now, why are we separating the children from each other? Who are absolutely the least affected by this virus? I know you want to try best to accommodate the greatest number of people as possible, but these distancing rules don’t make actual sense in real life, and we all know it. If you insist on adhering to distancing rules for legal purposes, I would like assurances that they will not be strictly followed at all times in the schools, especially in elementary grades. Our schools and children do not need a one-size-fits-all mentality. I would hope that serious discussions have occurred regarding the psychological pressure that our teens and preteens will face if students are separated by vaccine status, whether during quarantine or any other place or time in our schools. I understand that the only difference will be during possible quarantine length of a student, but I see that as a problem as well. The next public comment comes from Katrina Voorhees of Oviedo. I have been teaching in Seminole County since 1990. In my experience, the county has always made the safety of our students and staff a priority. I know these Board meetings are often filled with angry parents saying that masks are hurting their children. The public also sees the outrageous and inappropriate behavior of some, but I want the School Board to know that there are many parents and teachers that completely disagree. Last summer, the discussion was whether we would return face-to-face or stay virtual. Many people against virtual for all students told parents that if they want their children taught virtually, they can opt for the virtual option. So Seminole County accommodated, and many families did exactly that. Here we are, a year later, now disagreeing about masks in school. The fact is, COVID now has a new, more contagious and deadly variant. I hope everyone on the Board has been paying attention to the Delta variant. It is feared to be the cause for a third wave of the virus. Thankfully, people 12 and older have had the option to get vaccinated. Parents of younger students don’t have that privilege. Please require masks in Seminole schools where students 11 and younger attend. Cautious and concerned, parents spent a year opting for virtual. Thank you for making that an option last school year. After a year of virtual for children of parents who didn’t want their children at risk of catching COVID, now parents who don’t agree with their children wearing masks in schools should feel free to have their children attend the virtual option. Thank you for always making the safety of both students and staff a priority. Katrina Voorhees. Public comment 24 from Leja Lee of Longwood. I don’t have a poem this time, but I’m sure you guys are super bummed about that. But what I do have are demands for you all for our children’s sake. We are done playing this on-and-off mask game. Done with unnecessary and social distancing. Done with the hand sanitizer. Done with the overcleaning and putting toxins all over their school environment. Done with thermal guns pointed at our kids’ faces. Our kids need normalcy, and as close to normal will not do anymore. The flu will come in the fall, as it always does. What are y’all’s plans, then? Will you guys change your minds on mask policies again? Will you quarantine the class or a group of kids because they were near a child with the sniffles? Will you guys continue to mentally abuse our children by giving them more anxiety over getting sick? Getting sick is completely normal. If you guys can change your minds days before school starts about accepting a true medical exemption, as you did last year, for a child not able to wear a mask, then what keeps you from putting these abusive demands on our children again come next school year? The more you all resist, the more we will push back, and we are not going away. God have mercy on our children when this experimental genetic agent vaccine becomes available to all school ages. I know many parents will be lining up for their children for that, but not this crowd. Will our school be demanding vaccine status? Will you be treating the non-vaccinated kids differently and give special privilege to the vaccinated kids? Will you be part of the problem by causing such division in the classroom? They are already doing it in the NFL and in the workplace, and it’s coming for our kids if you don’t put a stop to it. Parents think that they will have to vaccinate their child in order to go to school. So if and when they decide to put this COVID genetic agent on the schedule, parents need to know that they have a choice to opt out of it. Florida still has exemptions. No shots, no school is not true. Parents don’t know different because they are not told they have options. I’m pretty sure if not all parents would stay clear of a known toxin that would make their child’s heart inflamed and enlarge, or a substance that would automatically give their child an autoimmune disorder. This is what’s happening to our young children now that this new experimental drug. Parents will be lining their kids up for this and unknowingly sacrificing their kids in the name of health. We have fought this abusive medical device on our kids’ faces for a year now, and we will fight tooth and nail to keep a needle out of our kids’ arms. It will just be the start to a new battle that we are willing to fight. To be honest, the way our school system is going, I do hope more parents take their children out of these government institutions and choose a better option. The next public comment comes from Laura Strakeljohn of Oviedo. Hello, SCPS Board members. When we received the survey for our intent for next school year, we were put in a very difficult position with so many unanswered questions. Will you vote to return our children to a normal, pre-COVID education? Will you continue to assault parental rights in making medical and health decisions for our children while ignoring our parental rights? There were so many times this past year my children shared struggling to breathe, hear their teacher, and difficulty with having themselves be heard. There were many times, as they shared stories about new friends, they included how they couldn’t hold their hands on the playground or sit next to them at lunch. They couldn’t see their teachers and friends smile. They couldn’t learn how to properly form letters and sounds that they needed with their speech delays because they literally couldn’t see their teachers’ faces. Will you continue to quarantine healthy children? Will you continue to make our children wear masks even when the box they come? Will you continue to make our children wear masks when even the box they come in have the warning that they do not prevent the spread of the virus? Will you continue to ignore the medical and SLD exemptions? Will you encourage segregation and bullying of masked versus unmasked, vaxxed versus unvaxxed? Will you ignore the science and facts of those who have actually contracted the virus have stronger immunity than those who are even vaxxed? Please restore our hope in education by putting our children first. Please focus on what you do best: educate and leave health and medical decisions to each family member. This past year, our children have struggled unnecessarily. These policies have significantly impeded not only their education, but also their physical and emotional health. These policies have been in direct assault on my rights as a parent, and they need to be removed immediately. I also ask you to implement a plan to ensure that this does not happen again. These emergency policies, which were instituted with what I believe were good intentions, should have been as easy to remove as they were to start. They should not have become such a policy that they could not have been removed by the same emergency process. I realize there may be future emergencies, and policies may need to be put into place. Please set up the process that, once they are in place, they can also be removed when evidence suggests that it can be. What assurances can we have as parents that this overreach will not happen again? These policies cause undue harm, and I pray that they will not have lasting effects on our children. One of my daughters was in one of your schools this year, and even though she is very behind and has learning challenges, they went above and beyond to discover best ways to help her learn. From the teacher to the whole IEP team, we finally have hope for our daughter to be taught the way she needs to be taught. We want her to continue to have the support and team behind her, helping her to We want her to continue to have the support and team behind her, helping her to learn and grow. In spite of our intentions and our desires to put our children in a learning environment where they will be taught how they need with their SLDs, we first need to know your decision and plans regarding returning our kids to a normal pre-COVID environment." The next public comment comes from Anne Marie Russell of Longwood. "I am writing in regards to the masks that were forced onto our children last school year. Every day I sent my kids to school, I felt horrible about it, horrible that it was hiding their beautiful smiles, horrible that they can't see their mat, their teacher's face, and most horrible because it is causing these children distress and harming their mental well-being. The masks are child abuse, and in Seminole County, public schools should also feel horrible that they put the children through that. If they even think about doing it again in coming, the coming school year, I can promise you that there will be a lot of very upset parents that won't back down from the fight for our children's health and well-being. It's our right to choose whether our child wears a mask or not, not the government or the school board. I'm almost positive homeschool will become very popular if you vote to continue masking our children. Also, we will find out who on the board voted for it and vote them out. Masks are ineffective, unnecessary, and unhealthy for our children. No more masks. I am a substitute teacher, and when I work at school, I see masks all over the ground outside and on the playground, on the cafeteria floor, kids slobbering all over their masks and putting the wrong mask on that was already on somebody else. These masks will carry more germs and cause sickness rather than preventing it. Me and all the other parents will not go away. We will continue to fight. Do not, do the right thing and ban the masks." The next public comment comes from Alicia Bryant from Oviedo. "Everyone is aware this school year has been unlike any other. Everyone was trying to make the right decision, stay safe, and do what they thought was best, including Seminole County public schools. At a certain point in the year, regardless of additional information, decisions took a turn. Decisions were no longer in the best interest of everyone and were only in the best interest of a teachers' union. What was once a health concern turned into a political concern. What was once a community and a support system for all became a dictatorship, making ultimatums knowing that one size never fits all. These decisions were to be, were to the detriment of our children. SCPS has always prided itself on an A-rated status, being the best of the best, and making sure all the students were taken care of and able to live up to their full potential. SCPS has always allowed for choice. Parents and students were allowed to choose anywhere from what school they would attend to what they would eat for lunch that day. They are, they are given these choices because we and SCPS know that all students are not alike, and all students do not learn the same. Choices are the reason why SCPS and its students are successful. Now there are no choices. There, there is only the illusion of choice. The first instance of mistrust came at the beginning of the school year. Parents were provided with a choice to attend school face-to-face or virtually, provided the information SCPS gave them. Once they made that choice, their choice was altered prior to the first day of school, and there was nothing they, they or their students could do about it. SCPS, SCPS took away the choice to breathe freely for all students. Another example is how students don't get to participate in extracurricular activities because they aren't offered or the normal amount of students allowed is restricted. If they are offered, you have to be lucky and be sure to choose the correct one. If not, your family can't be there to support you. For example, parents can attend basketball games in close proximity, but parents absolutely cannot attend a play. Families choose to have IEPs and 504 plans to help their children, but this year, they were completely disregarded. At no time were sensory issues taken into account. At no time were accommodations made to make sure there were no regressions in speech and or language. At no time were psychological or trauma-related issues taken into account. At no time were medical issues taken into account. There was an illusion of accommodations for which there was one solution: join virtual school. By taking away the choice to breathe freely from all students, you have taken away many educational, social, and emotional gains that these children would have achieved had SCPS not made a knee-jerk policy without evidence of its advantage and long-term effects, advantages that we now know were nonexistent. Students were picked, picked on, humiliated, and ostracized for their struggles to breathe by students, parents, and teachers. Relationships between students, parents, and teachers were lost and strained. There were no smiles, there were no hugs, there was no comfort, there was no explanation, there was just fear." The next public comment comes from Sarah Chavero, sorry, Sarah, from Rockledge. "Hope everyone is having a lovely summer break. All is best, all the best to Dr. Griffin and his retirement. I had two children in the SCPS system until this month. As a family, we moved to Brevard County in June. Masks are now optional in Brevard County public schools' property starting June 3. I ask that SCPS follow what surrounding counties have done and drop their mask mandate and allow it to be parental choice. I respect the, and understand that there are parents, scientists, and experts on all sides of the mask issue. That is why it needs to be a choice. I watched with great interest while sitting in the last SCPS board meeting. As, as a board, you could have put a temporary restriction on the mandatory mask policy while going through the legislative process, but you chose to not do that. Those actions speak volumes, especially since it is clearly harming your stakeholders. As a board, you have certainly found other legal loopholes, loopholes to push an agenda through quickly, going against your own board rules, including but not limited to your recent superintendent vote. I watched online as the work still, while the Work Skills Opening Task Force meeting with grave concern for our children and the future of SCPS, using the word accommodation as segregation to separate children in separate classes based on personal, private, medical, and religious choices is not the future. Separate is not equal. The healthcare choices of minors should and must remain private. Do not separate children by class due to their own personal, private, religious, or medical choice. This is creating more division and not unity or equity in our community. After the past year, our school community needs unity and healing. That is why medical choices for minors needs to remain private, and masks need to be optional. To stop the division at the SCPS community and start bringing people and parents from all different points of view together, that is the future. To learn from our differences and each other. With the incoming superintendent, my hope is that SC, for SCPS, is that it will remain one of the top counties for students to enroll in physics and advanced math. This creates equality by giving children opportunities through the public school system they wouldn't otherwise have. Thank you for your time and consideration, Sarah." The next public comment comes from Ryan Henchold from Lake Mary. "Chairman Almond and members of the board, I respectfully and adamantly request that you vote to rescind the mask requirements in SCPS. Whether there was or wasn't a need for such a requirement in the first place, there clearly is no need for it now. School staff, adults working in the schools have the ability to get the emergency use-authorized shot being provided to help reduce the symptoms impacts of SARS-CoV-2 by several pharmaceutical companies. These shots have shown to provide far more benefit than any other intervention, including distancing and face coverings. There never was any actual threat of children passing it on to adults, and data from across the globe has shown that. There is no reason for adults in schools to feel that they are at risk unless they choose to be children. We know conclusively that SARS-CoV-2 is not a serious threat to average healthy children. This, what, this has borne out across the world. They don't contract, spread, or suffer from it in any statistically significant way. Furthermore, the CDC estimates that with roughly 42% of children aged 5 through 12 having been infected with SARS-CoV-2, herd immunity has been reached in that subset of the population. Masks. Whether those who believe masks are useful, are a useful tool in stopping the spread of airborne viruses such as SARS-CoV-2 or not, we have plenty of data from around the world that shows that masks have been totally useless in stopping the spread of SARS-CoV-2 or any other airborne virus in known history. That is why, early in the SARS-CoV-2, people such as the Surgeon General of the United States, NIH Director Anthony Fauci, and Director of the World Health Organization, and countless other high-ranking officials and experts in virology, epidemiology, public health and virology, et cetera, all said masks do nothing to prevent the spread of the airborne virus. None have ever bothered to explain why they reversed their thinking and have offered no scientific evidence to support their reversals. Note: To date, the World Health Organization does not recommend children 6 through 11 be required to wear a mask. They feel it should be an individual risk-based decision. School staff will not benefit from mask requirements. Students will not benefit from a mask requirement. Masks do not do anything of value for staff or students. It is simple. The mask requirement must be rescinded immediately. Failure to do so will be detrimental to all parties involved. Furthermore, the citizens, the citizens of Seminole County will be paying attention to your decision and will remember it. It's time for you to have some courage and do the right thing sincerely. Ryan Henchold." And the last public comment comes from George Yenku of Oviedo, and I have to log back into my computer because his comments would not print, and I have to read them off my computer, so please stand by. Mr. Yenku writes, "As I have currently two daughters in Seminole County public system, one in elementary and the other in middle school in the Seminole County and Oviedo area, area, I want, I want that mask face coverings to be officially repealed and/or no longer required for children in K-12 schools in Seminole County public schools. I have included two masks study and their ineffectiveness. Also, CDC-owned COVID statistics for infection children. I forwarded this email to you all, so you have the links." And that concludes public comment, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Jill, very much. A lot. So, Dr. Griffin, you wanted to talk about moving item one, is it 9A?
9A, yes.
Okay. Do you, do you want that before we vote on the consent agenda?
Yes, please.
Okay. Just read it, or I'll call the person up if they haven't already spoken. Pardon? Three minutes.
I don't have any, I don't see anywhere online where it shows that you have an equity committee, and I wanted to make sure that it was online, it was with minutes. I didn't see anything on there. I looked at, so nothing's on there. I don't know what they talk about. I don't know a thing about that. That was the first I heard today. The other was, the work sessions, are they not recorded? Because for people that worked during the day, I have a very flexible schedule. I usually take Tuesdays, but for the majority of people who work, to be able to go back and listen to those, I didn't see that anywhere either on there, so that was just another recommendation. And then the need to change the superintendents, the assistant superintendent, I think based on the environment, or the, I think that if that could wait till another time to readdress that, I just feel like that's going to add a lot of mistrust and unnecessary, if it's not necessary, if it doesn't change the rules or the, or the work of whatever they're doing, I don't think the timing is great. So that's all I had to say.
Thank you. Jill, would you speak to work session real quick, if we record them, when and, if and when?
Our, our work sessions are not recorded. They are live and open to the public and noticed in the paper. There's no statutory requirement to record work sessions or school board meetings.
Okay, thank you.
You ready, Madam Chair?
Yes, Dr. Griffin.
Okay. Item 9A, my recommendation is that the School Board of Seminole County repeal policy 8421, mandatory face coverings, mask.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kraus?
Yes, I'd like to speak for just a moment. I plan to support this, this vote, but it is not without reservations. I would like for us as a board to continue monitoring infection rates, and as we approach school, especially for those students 12 and under that don't have the option, that their families would like for them to be able to get the vaccine but don't have the option yet, that we continue to monitor rates and reevaluate before school opens.
Thank you. Remember Sanchez?
I also would like to add to that, that for high-risk students and possibly employees, that if we have the funds, or we could get the funds, have a connect, pure connect program out of the virtual school program building for children that would just be there for health reasons only, if we had to come to that, just an option that possibly would happen, but we just bring it up now, type of thing.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. There are motion to, Superintendent, what is your recommendation on consent agenda, please?
My recommendation is that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you. No items removed for separate consideration. Superintendent, what's your recommendation on discipline hearing disposition?
My recommendation is that the School Board of Seminole County approve the student disciplinary recommendations from May 24, 2021, and June 7, 2021.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Superintendent, what is your recommendation? Oh, no, we just, we just did that, never mind. Any new business?
There's no new business. But for the Superintendent report, I'd like Ms. Elwood to come up and work us through the 2021-22 SCPS reopening plan.
Thank you.
The other three items are read-only. And while Ms. Elwood is coming up, please note that this is being presented to the board as an information item, not an action item, and that will give us flexibility to immediately change as necessary in the future. Ms. Elwood, before you begin, thank you for facilitating a large group.
You're welcome. Good evening, board members. So here we are again, a year later. So I have submitted to you an information item with a summary of recommendations. I would like to acknowledge all the stakeholders that contributed to not only this document, but helping us get through the last school year. So we have had tremendous support from our school teams, district teams, community stakeholders, parents, and especially, I want to acknowledge all of our students who did such a tremendous job through this last school year. So, that being said, we revisited the reopening plan from last year. You can see it's a much shorter document than what you had submitted to you last year. We looked at three main areas, and that was the physical and emotional health of students, instructional needs, and school operations. It's much shorter because we look to return to much more normal operating procedures. We sit here a year later, and our case data is tremendously better. So we've learned a lot over the last year about how to function with COVID, so we're feeling good about that. So in looking at the health and safety recommendations, Dr. Griffin and the board just took care of one of those. So the face mask recommendation from the task force was for voluntary masking for all individuals on campus. So we, we got through that. So the instructional, oh, and the health and safety also goes through the contact tracing, quarantine guidelines, and screening. One big change in there was for the isolation in clinic spaces only to be one area. We went through that in the last work session. I know there were a lot of questions about contact tracing and quarantine guidelines. We do get those guidelines from the State Department of Health. We are in constant communication with the Department of Health weekly, so we do anticipate some guidelines to change over the summer and as soon as we know, and we'll revisit that each month. Those guidelines will change as well for us. The other things for, the big ideas for health and safety, plastic barriers are recommended to come down in all classroom settings, so that is no longer a recommendation for the school sessions. So the instructional models, you've had a lot of information about the face-to-face and virtual. We did recommend instructional continuity, so being available for any disruption in learning, whether that is weather-related or COVID-related. So to be, we had a lot of feedback from parents that they wanted the same platform. So K-5, we've recommended Google Classroom. Any campus for 612, so that it's a familiar platform and parents aren't trying to learn multiple systems. Also, for scheduling and instruction, we gave schools flexibility. They know their campus better, they know their offerings better, so they are moving from straight block scheduling to being able to make that decision independently as principals with support of their executive directors. Also, we talked a lot about mental health supports, so we had a lot of feedback from our mental health teams in our own district and mental health professionals in our community, with our community stakeholder groups. with our community stakeholder groups. We have a robust team of psychologists, social workers, and mental health counselors that are going to help us with those mental health supports and make those available, as they have been at every school site for this upcoming school year. For school operations, we will again continue to clean and sanitize as necessary in our campuses, our buses, our dining rooms, so all of those protocols remain in place, similar to what they were last year. So those are kind of the big oversights of the plan. I am happy to take any questions. You all can read through this. It was a pretty simple document and pretty similar to what we went over in the work session.
Any questions, Board members? Can you speak to vaccinations and who makes that determination? We do not as a school board.
Vaccinations as...
Required.
Oh, being required. Vaccinations are not part of the required or recommended...
That would be the Department of Health who would make that recommendation.
Department of Health makes that recommendation.
Or determination.
For required enrollment vaccinations, yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the work of the Task Force.
Yeah.
Anything else, Board members? Being Dr. Griffin's last meeting?
I know. I feel bad because we really wanted to have some time just to talk about you, so I guess, Karen, you can go first and do real call order, whatever.
I'm going to give you a quick...
You already have, you're good.
...card over net right there. There you go. Done.
You're good.
I think we also need to recognize the other staff members that are retiring June 30. Unfortunately, I think there's only one still left here tonight. Mike Audro. Wish you great happiness in your retirement. You as well, Dr. Griffin.
It's been an absolute pleasure to serve the community and to serve all of you and all the students. I cannot believe it's been 40 years. I mean, 37 and 7, look how kind of time has flown, and thank you for your great work and appreciate our family so much. Thank you.
We wish you the best.
Madam Chair, can I just speak for one moment? I read this Irish little short poem, so I wanted to just share it with you. Here's to a bright new beginning and a fond farewell to the old. Here's to the things that are yet to come and to memories that we hold. May you always know the impacts you made and cherish the time with your beloved family and pups. And Lori Griffin, we thank you, thank you, thank you for sharing your husband with us. We wish you nothing but the best. Thank you.
Dr. Griffin, I have to say one last thing, if I could, please, Madam Chair. We go back a long way. It seems like yesterday that I was sitting right next to you at your first School Board meeting as superintendent, and I couldn't find that picture. I tried, but I'll keep looking. But on behalf of being a parent, more importantly, being a citizen, and most recently as a School Board member, I want to thank you. We did a lot of important work here tonight, but I didn't want your important work of the last 40 years to go unnoticed. And from the bottom of my heart, I thank you and to promise to you that we will continue your legacy of making sure that all of our students are either college-ready, career-ready, and most importantly, keeping citizenship at our forefront for all of our students for as long as we are here to ensure that your legacy lives on. You have saved lives, you have changed lives, and for that, we thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you for your kindness. That's nice.
No further business. This meeting is adjourned.